All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. Great to have so many members of the community here this afternoon. We're going to call to order the media of the city council for the afternoon of April 11th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres. Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis. John. Candelaus.
Present.
Foley. Batra.
Present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Going back to Dylan.
Here.
Thank you, have a form.
Great, thank you, Tony. Okay, if you are able, please join and, uh, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We got a Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah.
Do the flag.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be from Camille K. Valerio of LEAD Filipino, which stands for Leadership, Education, Activism, and Dialogue, and Councilmember Cohen will tell us more.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm excited to introduce LEAD Filipino, a nonprofit organization making a positive impact in our community. They've been empowering students, adults, and families in San Jose since 2015. LEAD Filipino is committed to increasing public leadership representation among Filipino-Americans, and they're achieving this through community-based campaigns and civil rights efforts. Even more exciting is how they're making a difference in District 4, which includes heavily populated Asian neighborhoods, including large Filipino community. Their leadership development programs, educational initiatives, and cultural events inspire the next generation of Phil Am leaders. LEAD Filipino is also amplifying the voices of the community on civil and human rights issues infecting Phil Ams in San Jose. Most recently, they helped with the opening of Delano Manong's Park, District 5 just south of District 4 in East San Jose, and will be organizing voter registration drives across District 4 this summer. Let's welcome Camille Valerio, the program manager of LEAD Filipino, as she performs today's invocation.
All right, yep, being five foot exactly. All right, Maganda ng Hapon, everyone, or good afternoon. My name is Camille K. Valerio, and I'm here representing LEAD Filipino, a small nonprofit that stands for Leadership, Education, Activism, and Open Dialogue. I'd like to thank Councilmember Cohen for inviting me here today to speak on our organization's behalf, but also to speak on the Philippine XO A American community here in San Jose. So, with that being said, our organization, if you don't know already, organizes around the social justice principles of equity and service, uplifting the Filipino beliefs of Bakikisama, Kapwa, and Bayanihan, all those translating to camaraderie, cooperation, and being overall a fellow human being. And with those beliefs, we increase the civic participation of our community, the culturally responsive education work, grassroots leadership, and community action in recent response to and support of the opening of the Delano Manong's Park in East Side, San Jose. And with the collective work and teamwork of our students, families, youth, and individuals, we are able to continue that work with the park, helping culturally develop it, thinking about ways to put in culturally relevant arts, how to activate that space, and in the future, keeping that space clean and beautiful for our families and youth to use in the future. But that is only one example of history in the making that we as an organization is creating. Our culture as Philippine XO As Americans actually runs very deep here in the city of San Jose, going way back all the way to 1920s, when the first Filipinos arrived to work on the local ranches and farms in Heinlandville. This town, this area encompass what we know today as North Sixth and Seventh Street, as well as Jackson and Taylor Streets. I share this story or this piece of history specifically because of, yes, how deep our history runs, but also because of the community and collaboration work beyond the town. Heinlandville was actually created by a German immigrant who understood the struggles of creating families and living here as an immigrant in a different country. And so with that space, it actually was a place of comfort and safety in the area known for anti-Asian hate and prevailing racism. As I reflect on that brief history and the work and the collaborations and partnerships, I think about the present day and the work that we as LEAD Filipino do. I think about our past partnerships with Vegilution, where we taught our members how to cultivate and harvest fresh produce, or even our upcoming partnerships with Chopsticks Alley, spreading awareness about the AAPI work that we do around water conservation and management. But our work doesn't go just beyond being environmentally conscious. Our work is also centered on hate prevention. It's centered around holistic health and caring about empowering our community and making sure that we're well represented. Our work goes into our Filipino Studies Program, making sure that our community knows their identity and culture. It goes into our yearly summit, our Women's Leadership Program, as well as our Queer Philippine X Summit, but also goes into our Stop Asian Hate work, where we teach our youth and our families how to be an active bystander and how to be active in their communities and in civics. Overall, as I reflect on the history and the work that we do as a community, I encourage we all, and all of us, to stay rooted in our deep history and our culture, our commitment to rising as collective, and of course, staying resilient for the future. From my heart to yours, Isang Bak Sak, meaning if one falls, we all fall, but if one of us rises, we all rise. Marang Salama.
Thank you, Camille. We are on to ceremonial items. Councilman Ortiz, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim April 11th through 17th as Cambodian Genocide Remembrance Week.
Thank you, Mayor, and if leaders from the Cambodian community would like to join me, please, you're welcome. Last month, the mayor and our city council colleagues unanimously approved the plan for a new Cambodian temple here in the city of San Jose, from a memo spearheaded by my council colleague, Councilmember Candelaus. It was during that time that we learned about the Cambodian people's richness of the arts, music, dance, agriculture, and education. That was once the epitome of greatness in the world. Today, I would like to share another chapter of the Cambodian history that has not been known widely in our society and really the rest of the world. In early 1975, the Khmer Rouge, led by their leader, Pol Pot, overthrew the Cambodian government and ended all Westernization to create a totalitarian society. All educated and talented Cambodian citizens unfortunately were separated from their families, and there was executions, leading to one of the most massive genocides in our history. By the end of 1979, the Viet Cong arrived and the Khmer Rouge regime was overthrown, ending the four darkest years of Cambodian history. During this time, more than 2 million innocent lives were taken by the torture, starvation, and executions. And thus, more than 140,000 Cambodian refugees were admitted to the United States. Today, California is home to the largest Cambodian diaspora in the world. And personally, I am grateful for the community, because since then, Cambodian residents have established businesses, pursued higher education, and raised new generations to become bright members of our thriving community. They've added to the beauty, cultural mosaic that is San Jose. The city of San Jose has played a vital role in ensuring that the Cambodian heritage and culture is recognized and preserved for past, present, and future generations. And there exists an opportunity for acknowledging and honoring the lives that were lost in the genocide, as well as the past, present, and future contributions of those who have survived. I hereby, together with the mayor and our colleagues from the San Jose City Council, declare that the Cambodian people will not be doomed by the wrath of the unfathomable atrocities of war and genocide, and designate April 11th through April 17th as the Cambodian Genocide Remembrance Week. I'd like to, uh, please have a few comments from the community.
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Q, and I am a proud member of the Cambodian American Resource Agency. On behalf of the Cambodian community, I would like to thank Councilmember Peter Ortiz, Mayor Mahan, and all of our city council representatives for recognizing this proclamation, April 11th to the 17th, Cambodian Genocide Remembrance Week. A special thank you to HG Win for working tirelessly on making this day possible. During Remembrance Week, we will honor and pay tribute to the millions of lives lost during the Khmer Rouge genocide. We will bear witness to the lived experiences of survivors, encouraging them to share their stories. April 17th, 1975, was the beginning of Year Zero, the dawn of an age in which there were no families, no sentiments, no grief, no schools, only death, where 2 million lives, almost a quarter of the Cambodian population, starved, tortured, and murdered by the Khmer Rouge regime. Thousands of Cambodian refugees resettled in the United States, and while their journeys proved difficult, they have overcome many obstacles and contributed profoundly to the social, cultural, and economic well-being of our society, many being business owners, doctors, teachers, artists, city and state representative, community leaders, and so much more. Our darkest history will never overshadow our resilience. Together, we will remember our past, we will work together to rebuild our future. Thank you again, Mayor and Councilmember, for this memorable moment. I ask that you please join our Buddhist monks for a blessing.
Good afternoon, everyone. These are historical events. On behalf of the Cambodian community, we would like to thank councilmembers Peter Odys, Mayors, Mahans, Edgy Wings, and all our San Jose councilmembers for supporting this proclamation, recognizing April 11th, 17th, Cambodian Genocide Remembrance, with innocence of San Jose. During Remembrance Week, we will honor and pay a tribute to the millions of lives claimed by the events from 1975 up to 1979. So, right now, we would like to pray for the lives of the person who were killed in Khmer Rouge together. So, let us recite with all the venerable monks over there. Ani cha, wata sang kara, opa tava yata mi no, opai chetwa, ni roy tan te te sang bu, pa sa ma so ka, a chirang, wata yang, ga yao, pa ta wen. Toa pe tava ye na, ni ra thang, wa kalaeng ka rang, ya u swa, cha vay ye na, ya tiya ka yang, cha han te mang, pa wer thaum. Wa kalaeng ka rang, ya tha tan de, na ko pa lao kiya, wo pa che, ta ko cha rang, e wang cha riem. Yong pa che, te pa ne, na, te at la thia, sa ke ta, vi ro la ha, pu ta sa sa ne, a ro kiem. Ta sa ha sa pe, ye ti pi na, tang lai, tang bo ro, tang sa tre, no cho ba na, pray yo, ba na, si ke de so, cho chum ra. Kum ai mien ro, oi ba na, si ke de so, pram tang ye tang lai, grok ke nee. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Let's try to see if we could get him for a picture, and if my colleagues would like to join, please, I welcome you all to join. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Torres, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize Foxtail Fermentation. There they are. Come on over, guys.
Good afternoon. So, I'm excited to present this commendation to Foxtail Fermentation Project, a new iconic small business in our downtown San Jose. In less than one year, they have been named the best new brewery by Hop Culture Magazine, a major accomplishment, so congratulations to them. I wish I could get awards in less than one year, being in existence. Owners Felipe and Wendy have generated a new buzzing culture around their passion for exploring unconventional techniques in brewing. They have an endless drive for creativity while also supporting local ingredients in their products. Most importantly, my favorite, they have delicious mocktails, so it's for everyone. You just don't have to go in there to get a beer. What I love about this business is that they are deeply rooted in this community. Their space has quickly become a hub for local San Jose residents, artists, comedians, musicians, and traveling alcohol aficionados, adding to the vibrancy of our downtown and creating space for innovation, inspiration, and growth. I encourage everyone to visit their location at 30 East Santa Clara Street, just a short hop from here. This Friday, oh, someone got that. I heard that laugh. This Friday, they are having an art residency opening where they'll be featuring Reyes Magos, a local Latino artist whose work is influenced by his cultural identity as a Chicano person living in our beautiful U.S. Our East Santa Clara corridor is seeing a revitalization like no other, thanks to businesses like Foxtail. So again, thank you Felipe and Wendy for choosing downtown San Jose as the home for Foxtail Fermentation Project and for being a haven where downtown culture can grow and flourish beyond imagination. I now welcome Felipe and Wendy, and I hope, let's bring down your parents as well. So Mom and Dad, please come on down.
Come down.
You can hand the phone to one of my staffers and they can take pictures for you.
Congratulations. Round of applause again.
Well, thank you for the recognition. Thanks to the city of San Jose for allowing us to create such a vibrant, creative, and safe establishment for our community. We're really excited to be able to house different artists, musicians, and anyone who would like to join. We pride ourselves in being a safe space, free of hatred, free of judgment, and we're very excited to finally create something, to create that excitement back in the streets. So, thank you.
Felipe really said most of the key points of what matters about our business, but mostly we couldn't have gotten here without the incredible support of so many members of our community, of our family, of our incredible employees, and just maintaining passion and wanting to provide more for the city and make sure that we give back to it what it's given to us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations again. I'll come over here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Great to see a small business thriving here in our downtown. Congrats on all your success in your first year. It's now my pleasure to recognize Kappa Alpha Psi. I want you guys come on down. Founded in Bloomington, Indiana, on January 5th, 1911, Kappa Alpha Psi Incorporated Fraternity is recognized as the second oldest existing historically black Greek letter fraternity and first intercollegiate fraternity incorporated as a national body. Throughout their history, the fraternity has never restricted membership on the basis of color, creed, or national origin, and has over 160,000 members across the United States and international chapters in several countries, including the United Kingdom, Germany, South Korea, Japan, the U.S. Virgin Islands, Nigeria, South Africa, and the Bahamas. Each chapter does great work to improve their local communities, including providing mentorship, scholarships, and work with the unhoused. Kappa Alpha Psi's Delta Row Chapter at San Jose State University was founded on June 16th, 1956, and was the very first African-American organization on its campus. On September 25th, 1970, the San Jose Alumni Chapter was chartered. From April 12th to April 16th, both organizations will be hosting the 76th Western Province Council, and their public meeting and award ceremony will take place on April 14th, where several remarkable individuals and organizations will be recognized. Now, I'm joined here by Malon Ballinton, Jamar Walker, former councilmember Forrest Williams, Rich Robinson, and Rev Ray, and I'm not sure who's going to say a few words about the organization, but that's gonna be you. All right. Come on over, Jamar.
Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jamar Walker, and I am the undergraduate polemark of the Delta Row Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated here at San Jose State, which we were founded here on June 16th, 1956, at San Jose State University. And I'm just extremely excited for the upcoming weekend and when it has to come. And I would just like to say thank you to the state of, uh, to the city of, to the city of San Jose, and in as long as, as well as San Jose alumni, for us being able to host the 76th Western Province Council. Thank you.
First of all, thank you to Mayor Mahan, Rhonda Hadnot, and the city of San Jose for recognizing Kappa Alpha Psi. For those of you who do not know, Kappa Alpha Psi was founded in Bloomington, Indiana. And if you did not know, in the history of America, Bloomington, Indiana was the headquarters of the Ku Klux Klan. So when our founders founded this fraternity in 1911, they envisioned me becoming a member to be able to do leadership and grow our organization nationwide. So for me, as an undergraduate at San Jose State University, I saw a then-councilmember Forrest Williams. He didn't know me, but I seen him, and I said, "I want to be whatever he is. I want to become something greater than what I think outside of my neighborhood." So it is very important when you see college fraternities and sororities that you do not just think, "Oh, they're fraternities." We are in the arts, in science, and in math, and in all fields. We have brothers such as Arthur Ashe, Ralph Abernathy, and right now, Hakeem Jeffries is a member of our esteemed organization. So when you see Kappas in San Jose this weekend conducting business, we're also going to be spending our money here in the city. We're gonna have a great time, and we are also gonna recognize that moving forward, when we advocated seven years ago to bring this conference here to San Jose, it is finally back after 30 years of not being in the city of San Jose. So thank you all for this moment, and we will make sure that you see, because the Kappas are here.
Okay, we're on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I'd like to suggest one, which is the joint meeting, it's currently agendized at the end. This is the item one under the joint meeting for the Moving to Work Annual Plan with the Housing Authority. We have members of the Housing Authority calling in from the East Coast, so to accommodate their schedule, I'd like to ask that the council move that item to the top of our agenda in front of 3.1, the report of the city manager. Right.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Second.
Great, thank you. And then before we vote, we will go to public comment. Before we do that, though, we are adjourning today's meeting in memory of Raoul Lozano, founding executive director of Teatro Vision, co-founder of the Multicultural Arts Leadership Initiative, and also founder of Valle Verde, who passed away on February 20th, 2023. And I believe Councilman Torres will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon again, everyone. So today, I have the honor of adjourning this meeting to recognize the accomplished life of Raoul Lozano, a well-known and respected leader in San Jose. For 10 years, Raoul served as executive director of Teatro Vision, a thriving theater company in San Jose, whose work is known to amplify the voices of our Latino and Latina communities by creating dignified and empowering sense of identity. After a decade of building up the company and raising money for Teatro Vision, Raoul became a major arts leader not just in the Latino community, but in Silicon Valley. Raoul was also a volunteer and founder of the Multicultural Arts Leadership Institute, Mali, and first ACT Silicon Valley precursor to Silicon Valley Creates, where he promoted investment, leadership, access, and inclusion in multicultural arts organizations throughout our community. Raoul then shifted gears and decided to make a difference for families facing food insecurity during the Great Recession. In 2011, Raoul started his own nonprofit, Valle Verde, an organization that promotes healthy eating, provides food access to low-income families by teaching them how to grow their own organic, homegrown gardens, and provides micro-entrepreneurship training. This was Raoul's labor of love for over 10 years. His work did not go unrecognized. Last May, he was the recipient of the Local Jefferson Award for Community Service, and most recently, he was honored at the state level by the California Arts Council for his service and contribution to the arts. May Raoul Lozano rest in peace, knowing the fruits and vegetables of his labor will continue to grow here in San Jose, and that his contributions touch the hearts and souls of our Latino community in San Jose and beyond. I now invite Raoul's brother, Rudy, to say a few words.
Mayor Mahan, Councilmember Torres, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Lozano family. of the Lozano family, we would wish to thank, we would like to thank you for the honor, the honor you've given our brother today. We always pride and love for his neighborhood and the larger San Jose community, was longstanding heartfelt, and brought great joy to him. With gratitude and respect, we honor Raoul, and thank you very much.
Thank you, and we're very sorry for your loss. Tony, do we have public comment on Orders of the Day?
Yes, we have two hands up. Blair, and followed by Rosa.
Hi, I'm Claire Beekman. I just wanted to thank yourselves very much for taking a public comment on your Orders of the Day changes today. You use a bit of your own discretion for Orders of the Day, closed session report, and city manager's report. I just wanted to remind yourselves that, again, a thank you for a public comment at this time. I think there's a way that we can have a more regular standard system for Orders of the Day, the closed session report and city manager's report, to allow one minute of public comment if there is something on its agenda that day. It's a more standardized way to practice the agendas each week instead of the use of discretion that's inconsistent and uncomfortable, and just leaves yourselves unknowing in how to act and work sometimes. Thank you. I hope we can work on this issue.
Rosa? Rosa Vargas?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Rosa Vargas. Trabajo en la comida rápida desde hace 20 años.
Can you hold on a moment? The audio's switching.
I'm part of the fight for one syndicate.
Is Rosa, are you talking about wage theft, or are you talking about Orders of the Day?
Talking about Orders of the Day.
Okay, go ahead.
Wage theft is something that's evident.
Okay, we're not talking about wage theft right now. That's item 3.3. So, can you tell her?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll call you for item 3.3.
Okay, está bien, gracias.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Back to you.
Okay, thank you. I believe we're ready to vote.
I'm still waiting for Batra and Torres.
Okay, that passes. We are on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. We received authority to file an appeal in the Dominguez versus City of San Jose case at closed session this morning. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is the consent calendar. Are there any items council would like to pull from consent today? Okay, do we have a motion? Does anyone want to wait?
Move for consent.
Move approval?
Move for approval, yeah.
Second.
Great, thank you. Do we have public comment on the consent calendar?
Blair?
Hi, thank you. Claire Beekman here. Article trace point, punto trace, I guess, is the item that the woman wanted to speak on previously. And, yeah, a reminder that, you know, a little bit of a one-minute public comment can be a very efficient way to help the council process along as well. Item 2.10 is about actions for Santa Clara Valley Urban Runoff Pollution Prevention Program. I am not sure if this program is connected to the recent federal funding dollars that you're receiving for sewer and water, rainwater runoff issues that was declared an emergency in San Jose and many other California counties this past winter because of these really weird storms we've been having. And I felt it was important at this time to remind ourselves that there is Bay Area sea level rise issues that happened with this storm. I think that we need to be noting and need to learn how to better talk about openly. I mean, if we're doing these sewage project things, I think it is in preparation for the sewer rise issues that are, I mean, the bay water level rise issues that are happening, and we should simply be learning how to more openly talk about that. And with that said, I'm a bit disappointed that these federal funding dollars are going for cleaning out the creeks, the people of the creeks, when it could be going to, you know, the actual projects themselves. And I know San Diego is getting the same federal funding dollars and help, and I'm not sure yet, but I'm getting the feeling they're not using those dollars to, on homeless sweeps. And I just worry a bit about the legality of using this money for the sweep process, and I just wanted to mention it at this time. Thank you.
Paul, followed by Catherine.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Paul Sutter from the horseshoe. I wanted to thank you for the San Jose Mercury Archives. That, as a researcher, that is probably one of the most important primary sources of information that you go to. I mean, it's really basic that you go to newspapers. And it's frustrating that the Mercury News hasn't been reported prior to 1985. That's been very, very frustrating. And so, by you investing in this, you're basically investing in the history of our city. You know, it's important to go to these, to those documents, because you have not just necessarily the news that's being reported, but how it's reported. You know, what kind of position is the reporter taking? Because all of those elements reflect the time, and they reflect how people's thoughts were in the predominant culture, and what their thoughts were of the subcultures that they considered subculture at the time. And so, that's very important. So, I see this as an investment by the city. In order to do that, I just hope that you can find whatever funding sources necessary to continue to facilitate that process. So, I just wanted to thank you.
Catherine? Catherine Hedges?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, yeah. I just wanted to echo Blair Beekman's comments, because I think it's an atrocious waste of resources to keep sweeping the unhoused communities instead of working on solutions for the problem. Thank you very much.
Back to council.
Great, thank you, Tony. I believe we, I don't see any hands. Why don't we vote on the motion from Councilmember Ortiz? Okay, that passes. Thank you, Tony. We're on to the joint meeting of the City of San Jose and the Housing Authority. We have one item, which is support for the 2024 Moving to Work Annual Plan. I believe, is Jackie coming down? No? Okay. Staff presentation on this? I don't think we do. Okay, we have members of the Housing Authority on Zoom to answer any questions the council may have. Why don't we go to public comment first?
No hands have gone up.
Mayor, I'm sorry, this is Preston. I don't know how to raise my hand. May I say something?
Preston, did you have a presentation?
We do not have a presentation, but I would like to say just a few words, if that's okay.
Yes, absolutely.
And so, first of all, I must say joining early and being able to see the earlier items, the Cambodian Genocide Remembrance Week, as well as honoring Raoul Lozano, was really powerful. And so, thank you for moving our item up so I can speak with you, but I just want to say that was pretty amazing. I also want to say, at the last time I was in front of the council, that Councilmember Dawn had a number of questions. We were able to meet last week. We are going to set up a few more meetings, so I can continue to answer his questions and make sure he has the information he needs. And I just want to extend myself to all council members, that I am more than happy to come over and talk with you about the Santa Clara County Housing Authority and our partnership with the City of San Jose. With that said, Mayor Mahan, I just want to say thank you to you and the council members for moving this item up a little early. I am in Washington, D.C. I'm joining 125 other Move to Work Housing Authorities at our annual Move to Work Conference. Move to Work was created in 1996, and the San Jose Housing Authority and the Santa Clara County Housing Authorities became designated as Move to Work Agencies in 2008. Move to Work allows us to obtain waivers from HUD, so we can test innovative ideas, so we can provide more housing opportunities for our families, and implement strategies to become operationally efficient. In the past year, our Move to Work Plan, in the past, our Move to Work Plan really looked inward. This plan is almost exclusively focusing on initiatives to bring families into the center of the work that we do, and to align our federal investment that comes through the Housing Authorities, align that investment with the initiatives that the City of San Jose is pursuing. This Move to Work Plan has a number of initiatives that we're really excited about, and we are hoping that HUD will approve them, such as assisting interim housing in the City of San Jose and Santa Clara County, creating homeownership opportunities, and addressing the digital divide that severely impacts families and children that we serve. I look forward to answering your questions and appreciate you considering this.
Thank you, Preston. Really appreciate you accommodating our schedule with you being on the East Coast. I see a hand from my colleague, Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you. Did we take public comment first? Yeah, okay. First off, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the Santa Clara County Housing Authority, as well as the Commissioners from the City of San Jose Housing Authority, for joining us today and preparing this presentation. Really excited about this work. And also, thank you to our housing staff for your support in moving this annual plan forward. I'm very interested in conversations regarding the supporting homeownership opportunities through the Limited Equity Housing Cooperative. I think this is an innovative idea that will serve well to support our families in East San Jose. Keep in mind, these are families that are often not afforded the support after purchasing a home, let alone pathways to homeownership in general. And I'm eager to learn more about how this program will materialize, and we'll have my staff working closely following this work, as I'm sure it'll be very impactful for my district and really working-class communities throughout the city of San Jose. I'm also keenly interested in the work surrounding the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park, both the purchase and rehabilitation. We know that mobile home parks are essentially one of the greatest, greater sources of naturally affordable housing options that are uniquely positioned to serve as a pathway for greater wealth outcomes. And as our city moves towards preserving zoning of mobile home parks, I hope we can work together to implement a similar model like that of the Buena Vista Park here in San Jose. So, I'm excited for the opportunities, and I hope to work closely with all parties to ensure the success of these ideas, and to especially see great impact for our working-class communities, including East San Jose. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. Councilmember Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just got a few questions. The Buena Vista Mobile Home Park is located in Palo Alto, and how's that going to impact our city? This question to Preston, please.
So, our Move to Work Plan is combined City of San Jose Housing Authority and Santa Clara County Housing Authority initiatives. We keep our books separate, so anything that is happening in Buena Vista will only be funds of the Santa Clara County Housing Authority, and not any city funds. So, it's listed because it's part of our overall Move to Work Plan, but it's not something city dollars or City of San Jose funds would be used for.
I see that you post the memorandum on the county commissioner website, and held one public hearing. Was your public hearing held, and how was it noticed? Was it posted in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese as well? Were there a translator available?
The answer to those questions is yes, it was posted, and yes, we do provide translation assistance.
Was there any other outreach performed by your department?
Right, so we have done, that's a great question. And in the, over the last nine months, we've been working with a large number of community organizations and talking with them and getting their ideas. And we are really looking forward to expanding our community engagement for our 2025 plan. And we want to start early, and so we'll be starting in July of this year, so that we can engage people a little bit more robustly than we have in the past.
And I have one last question. If you waive the requirement to execute a new housing assistant payment contract, what happened if a party, either the resident or the SCCHA, doesn't uphold their end of their agreement?
Right. So, what happens, sometimes there is a lease change, and the old rules, if we have a change in the lease between the tenant and the landlord, we would have to go back through and start the entire process, the examination, and the whole Section 8 process from the beginning. This allows us to make a change that has been agreed to by the landlord and the resident and the Housing Authority, and gets a waiver from adding additional bureaucratic steps. And so, this is something that is done in partnership with the landlord, and not excluding them. So, they're at the table as we do this.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. Let's see, other hands. Preston, I also wanted to just thank you and your board for recognizing the importance of emergency interim housing as part of the continuum of housing solutions that will help us end homelessness in our community. Among the many innovations in this plan, which I'm very supportive of, is a recommendation that the Housing Authority be able to help fund operations of our EIH sites, which I think is exactly the kind of partnership that we're going to need to have to accelerate solutions to get people into safe, managed environments with supportive services. So, I appreciate the Housing Authority's willingness to go in this direction, to partner with us, and to support the work that the city's trying to do to end homelessness here. With that, I would certainly entertain a motion. Councilmember Ortiz, I don't think you, did you move?
No, I didn't, but I would like to move now for approval.
Okay, so, sorry, who was the second? Councilmember Dawn, okay. And that's a motion to approve the staff recommendation, which in the agenda has two components to it. And we've taken public comment, so I think we're ready to vote.
Hold on just a second. Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we're back to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
Okay, thank you. On to item 3.3, Wage Theft Prevention Policy Revision. We have a staff presentation, so we'll invite folks down to the box, and please begin whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Matt Lesh, Acting Public Works Director, and with me is Chris Hickey and Louis Professi Howe from Finance. Chris is our Division Manager over our Office of Equality Assurance. Chris is our Division Manager over our Office of Equality Assurance in Department of Public Works. In our packet, in the agenda packet here, you have a memo and a supplemental memo with some details, enhanced and revised red line policy. Chris is going to walk through the highlights of current and proposed policy changes with some reasons why those changes are recommended. We are here to tee up the conversation for you and take your direction on the policy. Our aim with our partners in developing these recommendations was a clear and consistent policy that can better meet our policy goals. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Chris to talk through those policy goals.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chris Hickey, Public Works. So as staff developed, developed an enforceable policy, we had two key goals that guided our efforts. So the primary goal was to incentivize wage theft across multiple industries by eliminating bad actors from bid consideration while incentivizing payment of outstanding judgments. The secondary goal was to provide crucial services, city services, on an expedited timeline without having to waive the policy. So a question of why revise the policy now? The current policy had some enforcement and implementation issues, and how it was worded, specifically overly broad criteria for mandatory disqualification led to some unintended impacts to city services, as well as staff had to make implementation and enforcement decisions with incomplete and inconsistent information and data. There is a moment of opportunity, and this, this comes from the California Labor Commissioner's Office releasing a new public data portal, which provides staff expedited and verifiable and measurable wage theft judgments that staff can use immediately, as well as the state of California's Labor Commissioner's Office does not have the resources needed or the capacity to assist workers in actually collecting from those judgments. And at this time, more than half of the time, the Labor Commissioner judgments go unpaid. So this is an opportunity where we can draft a enforceable policy that will help with that situation. So the current policy, the current policy that was approved in 2016, it has, these are the disqualification, the bidder disqualification requirements. So the city shall disqualify if in the last five years, two or more paid judgments are found, or any unpaid judgments are found. The city does have discretionary disqualification if a bidder has one paid violation within five years, or their bid certification is inaccurate. Additionally, in the current policy, bids on public works, construction projects are exempt from the wage theft policy. As staff provided in the memo as well as today, the policy recommend, revision recommendations are to change the disqualification, disqualification requirements for, for bidding. So the mandatory for, mandatory disqualifications, judgments are to mean California Labor Commissioner judgments or final decisions. These paid judgments, if you have, if a bidder has three or more within the last three years that are paid, they would be mandatorily disqualified from bidding considerations. Additionally, if, if a bidder has one or more unpaid judgments within the last five years, they would also be mandatorily disqualified. Again, we do have discretionary disqualification, which would include review of all judgments and decisions relating to wage and hour violations, with staff's ability to obtain those judgments and findings. This could be through staff's research, or even a third party providing a civil court case or other judgment from a different jurisdiction. Through the discretionary disqualification, disqualified bad actors, we would determine that based off of communicative wage theft history. So that includes the number of judgments, the dollar amount of those judgments, number of affected employees, affected employees, size of company, and overall wage theft history. In these revisions, recommended by staff, we would also include public works construction underneath this policy, so again, removing the public works exemption. And we would maintain the requirement that all bidders disclose judgments, all judgments and decisions, whether it be from the California Labor Commissioner or other agency. Due to staff having the ability to review California Labor Commissioner's judgments through that online public database, we were able to find that janitorial and security guard services, two industries that are typically low paying, also have a high rate of wage theft as throughout the entire industry. And so staff recommends that proposers and bidders on our janitorial and security contracts are not mandatorily disqualified if they have wage theft in their past, but to ensure that workers' rights and protections are met, that, that through the RFP process, that a, the proposers and bidders provide documentation that demonstrate how they will comply with labor and wage requirements. And those are wages, hours worked, working conditions, as well as a policy or a grievance procedure for any wage theft or hour claims. Now, proposers may rely on provisions in a collective bargaining agreement or provide additional or other documentation. This other documentation and the, and collective bargaining agreements will be provided by the Office of Equality Assurance in Public Works through labor addendum in the janitorial and security guard service agreements and RFP templates. There is some substantial time to be able to provide those updates to labor addendum as the current security guard service agreement terminates in the year 2028, and the current janitorial agreements terminate in the year 2030. Additionally, for certain services that are regulated under state or federal law, will, we recommend not having a mandatory disqualification similar to the janitorial and security guard services as well. So in lieu of mandatory disqualification, the city would establish evaluation criteria during the RFP process, which again includes the number of judgments or final decisions that a company has, the cumulative dollar amount of the judgments and decisions, number of employees affected, size of company, and also just the history of compliance overall with labor law. An example of this would be the city's banking services, which is very complex, and the state actually requires a collateral, collateralization mandate to safely execute the city's $6 billion worth of transactions that we, we perform annually. Banking services also has a very wide range of services that they provide, numerous branches nationwide, hundreds of thousands of employees, but the business itself has many different arms. So retail services for, you know, personal bank accounts, commercial services is what the city uses for, for our transaction, but they also have mortgage brokers, investment banking, et cetera. And as, when we are looking at the industry as a whole, there is wage theft, but when we look at the specific arms of the banking services, the commercial side, which is the side the city utilizes, does not have wage theft or high amounts of wage theft. However, the retail side, the, the investment inside does have that. And those are typically revolved around wages, or in a lot of cases, commissions owed to those, to those employees. And with that, we are here for any questions or comments.
Great. Thanks for that detailed overview. Why don't we go to public comment first?
I have Ramon. This is the, we're going to start with in-person speakers. So I have Ramon, Jaime, or Jamie Artega, Harvey, Louise Auerhon, and Ray Torres, if you guys can come down to the microphone in no particular order. So again, that's Ramon, Jaime, Harvey, Louise, and Ray.
I hope you guys can hear me while I have to wear a mask. I got allergies. It's killing me right now. So we're, I'm here and with some coworkers of mine in Local 853 Union. I'm an employee of Premier Recycle here in San Jose, not too far from right here, City Hall, to support 3.3. We're actually going and have been going through wage theft issues where I work at. And to see something like this come about, to actually take action or have an expansion for employers that have wage theft issues and continue to do so, it, it's a good thing for a lot of workers, especially when you're going through it still, and they're not being held accountable, or having some kind of actions taken towards and for it. So we're here to be in support of it, and, well, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Jaime Artega, and I work for the Northern California Carpenter's Union. But today, I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of the unrepresented worker that is abused every day through wage theft. So I have a little something to say, but first of all, as an investigator, I've seen it all. Wage theft, that doesn't include the actual wage theft. It also involves human trafficking, families in despair, a lot more, but that's some of the stuff that it involves. We appreciate the City of San Jose looking for creative ways to help stop theft in public works. I also want to commend the city council members, Colehen Kamai and Domingo Candelas, for trying to halt what otherwise be an invitation for any wage thief to enter the construction market in San Jose. However, this needs to be looked at from a perspective with other stakeholders who understand the issues and the way that the prosecution works for wage theft. We ask that you postpone the vote until we can speak on the subject and create new policy that works for everyone, and is not too cumbersome for the city as well. The current, the current and proposed amendments leave out several options for wage theft to be litigated, including the options for district attorneys to prosecute criminally under Penal Code 487m, which adds wage theft to the grand theft portion of the criminal code. We have reached out to district attorneys, and they are working with us in an effort to stop this crime. The current policy will allow criminals to bid on city projects. Wage theft is a serious crime that not only, not only affects the violated workers, but their spouses and their children too, by literally taking food off the table. We ask that you please take a minute and take all this into account before today's vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Harvey McKeown. I'm from Carpenter's Local 405. So we really do welcome the amendment to remove the current public works exemption from the city's wage prevention policy. But at the same time, we question the city's revision of provisions related to mandatory disqualification from procurement. As written, or as we understand it, the amendments would only potentially disqualify contractors that have received three or more final wage judgments from the Labor Commissioner's Office in the past three years. Simply put, this is impractical. Given the mounting backlog of wage theft claims at the Commissioner's Office and the Labor Commissioner's Office, this is limited resources. Often even the most egregious contractors would not meet this threshold, and would therefore be free to bid on public contracts. And in this way, city policy would effectively be inviting repeated wage theft offenders into San Jose. We also question the intention underpinning the addition of Section 4 to the wage theft prevention policy. Language is ambiguous. It appears to afford the city discretion to wage disqualifying circumstances, rendering them further ineffective. So ultimately, it's critical that this policy explicitly mandate disqualification, not only the basis of Labor Commissioner judgments, but also on the basis of court orders and administrative decisions. We ask that these grounds for disqualification be explicitly included in the wage theft policy, prevention policy, and that disqualification is strictly mandated in these circumstances so that the revised policy ultimately is effective in protecting construction workers. So as such, we ask the council to postpone voting on these amendments today.
Thank you.
So that's, the stakeholder input can be properly accounted for, and our door remains open as always in collaborating on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Louise Auerhon with Working Partnerships. I'm here today to urge you to support and empower workers to stand up for their rights by strengthening and not weakening our wage theft policy for city contracting. I want to thank the many members of council who've led on this issue, some of you who've been working on it for many years, and some of you who are new but have jumped right in. And thanks especially to Vice Mayor Kamai and council members Cohen and Candelas for their thoughtful memo that responds to workers' concerns and urge the council to pass that memo today. You'll be hearing more today from people with direct experience of wage theft, how difficult and frightening it can be to try to speak up and navigate the system, to get back your stolen pay, and the effects that it has on their families and their communities. These stories and tens of thousands of more like them are why I'm asking you today to stay strong, support the memo, and pass a wage theft policy that workers can actually use that puts our city's money where our values are. City money should never be funding companies who repeatedly steal from and exploit their workers or try to take their rights away. So the council member's memo accomplishes four critical goals. One, it protects collective bargaining for janitors and security officers, so workers don't face losing union protections that they fought for every time a contract is rebid. This replaces the staff language, which is very problematic because it opens the door for a company to unilaterally write any sort of document without input or negotiation with workers and say, "I'm using this document to exempt myself from the wage theft policy." That's unconscionable. It's completely counter to the intent. We think that the memo creates a much better compromise. It also ensures that construction workers are protected by covering Cuapas and Bofis in addition to judgments, and changes the mandatory department, department back to three violations, two violations every five years.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Ray Torres. I'm the Vice President of Teamsters Local 853, where we represent 15,000 members here in Santa Clara County, and we are standing here in support of the amendment. This amendment would protect our workers. You know, we had Brother Ramon speak on it in the beginning. They currently were victorious in an organizing drive, and it's companies like that company that for 30 years have made money off of their backs and stealing off of their wallets. So we're here in support of the amendment. Thank you.
Blair, followed by Catherine. Blair, we have you on here twice, so we were attempting to Blair, we have you on here twice, so we were attempting to unmute both of your names.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Sorry. It was confusing. I had two things on. I can, with the time remaining, yeah, I am, thank you for this item. Thank you for the words of public comment. Everybody had something interesting to say. Thanks for the words of Louise, as always, of course. I mean, we want to make a really strong, vibrant, meaningful wage theft policy in our future. You know, as we've made adjustments to this particular policy from the initial wage theft policies, what we do here today, can we be clear with each other that this is just a work in progress? And what we do now, in two years down the road, we can make really important adjustments again to address, to better further clarify what is the vibrancy and importance of having good wage theft policy in the first place. I hope we really want to work towards that goal. And it's, I mean, I don't understand everything, so how can you help me understand that better? Why is our city government totally exempted from policymaking? I'm completely baffled by that. I would like a very clear description why city government services doesn't fall under wage theft issue ordinance ideas. Why is that? The city government needs to set an example of how good policies work. So I'll be interested for explanations from yourselves, from clarity, and how this can move forward in the future and we can make changes as needed. Thank you.
Catherine, followed by Rosa.
Hi, I'd like to, excuse me, yes, I'd like to continue what a lot of the other speakers have been saying that although the current proposal is a step in the right direction, there is a lot of significant omissions that need to be remedied before we vote on it. And if we can't take the time to do that, it seems the memo from Kamai and Kornina should be the best option, unless we can examine the measure further. It seems like there is a lot of really significant gaps. But thank you for at least trying to update the policy.
Okay, yeah, I think she's done. Rosa, followed by Peter.
My name is Rosa Vargas.
Hold on just a moment. Go ahead. And Armando, can you tell her to pause so you can interpret while she's speaking? And she can go ahead. Did you guys switch?
My name is Rosa Vargas. I've worked in the fast food industry for over 20 years.
Armando, I'm not hearing you.
My name is Rosa Vargas.
Thank you.
My name is Rosa Vargas, and I work in the fast food industry for the last 20 years.
Armando?
Yes. Wage theft is very frequent in the fast food industry.
And we don't have a voice, a one voice to make these companies responsible for the money that they owe us.
We know firsthand that they need to be responsible and face the they need to face and be responsible, and we want to make sure that we support this amendment. They need to find a way to pay their workers the money they owe. Please support this memorandum. Thank you.
Peter, followed by Frank.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Peter Macca. I'm a resident of District 4 and part of the Filipino Association of Workers and Immigrants Association. I am asking today for my commitment to support the revision of the wage theft prevention policy. As a community member and organizer working alongside my Filipino workers, particularly diverse health workers in San Jose and surrounding communities in the county, unfortunately, the issue of which is far too common in the area. While some steps have been taken, such as in 2016, to begin to address the issue, many workers still face barriers to filing a claim, including the fear of retaliation from employers and the glaring fact that eighty percent of those who receive a favorable judgment still have yet to receive a penny. Even more striking right now is that the current policy still falls short in ensuring these protections for workers in vulnerable industries, including city contracted work with construction, janitorial, and security services, which are essential to our city's backbone and infrastructure. We need to take the steps today to address these issues. I urge you to spread the wage theft prevention memo submitted by Vice Mayor Kamai and thank you.
Frank, followed by Mundo.
Thank you, Mayor Mahan, City Council, for your time. My name is Frank Austin. I'm a business agent with UA Local 393. UA Local 393 represents over 3,100 plumbers, pipe fitters, steam fitters, and HVACR technicians in Santa Clara and San Benito County. Thank you for taking the time to visit this important issue and your careful consideration of the leadership opportunity that we all have to take a stand against the exploitation of workers. I'm here to ask each one of you to vote in support of Councilmember Kamai, Candelas, and Cohen's memo dated 4/7 to do the following. Add public works. Make sure that includes the type of wage theft violations that are common in construction, like CWPAs and BOFE judgments, and protect collective bargaining and janitorial and security contracts so that workers do not have their union rights taken away from them. Being a member of our union for over 34 years, I've been able to witness how generations of families are able to have a sustainable living in the Bay Area and pride to receive a fair livable wage for the work they perform. By having strong wage theft language within the city's policy, it ensures that all contractors compete on a level playing field and prevents low-road contractors from using wage theft to gain an economic advantage in an otherwise competitive bidding process, stealing well-earned wages from our families within our communities. For this, I strongly recommend that you support the memo dated April 7 by Councilmember Kamai, Candelas, and Cohen. Thank you.
Mundo, followed by Alex, and Alex is in person.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for your careful consideration and leadership in taking a stand against the exploitation of workers. My name is Admundo Scarsega. I'm also a business representative for UA Local 393 with over 3,100 plumbers, pipe fitters, steam fitters, and HVACR service technicians in Santa Clara and San Benito Counties. And I'm also here as a lifelong resident of San Jose. We're here to ask each of you to vote in support of Councilmember Kamai, Candelas, and Cohen's memo dated April 7 to do the following. To add public works, to make sure to include types of wage theft violations that are common in construction, like CWPAs and BOFE judgments, and to protect collective bargaining and janitorial and security contracts so that workers don't have their union rights taken from them. Bar bidders from getting city contracts if they have been found by state to have committed wage theft two or more times in the past five years so that those companies who have adopted a pattern and practice of wage theft are not getting city support. Wage theft is an important and personal issue to me. I lived here in San Jose my entire life. I've been able to raise my family here, just as only a few of my childhood friends have been able to do. Those who are also skilled and trained union members, which means well-trained, work safely, which helps protect everyone on the job sites and get our jobs done well and efficiently and paid a livable wage. That means tax revenue all over the city with zero need for government assistance. So again, we urge each of you to vote in support of the memo by Councilmembers Kamai, Candelas, and Cohen. Thank you.
Alex. Followed by Zoom user.
Good evening. My name's Alex Ovessel, and I've been with Premier Recycle for eight years. Premier Recycle has wage theft allegations towards it right now. And it's used to subcontract with the city contractors of San Jose. I am in support changes to the ordinances. I'm in support of it. And I just want to see more done to protect workers like myself and my brothers behind me. Thank you.
Zoom user, followed by Ariel. Zoom user.
Hello?
Yes.
Hey, hi. My name is Joy Hunt. And actually, I'd like to say good afternoon, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Joy Hunt. I'm a member with SEIUUSWW. And I'm calling in support of Councilmember Candelas's memo for wage theft. We further call on the city council to protect collective bargaining rights for workers on janitorial and security contracts so that workers need not fear having their hard-won union protections taken away from them when a contract is rebid. As you are aware, this exact situation arose a few months ago during the rebidding for the city's security contract where workers who had just recently won and organized for a collective bargaining agreement faced losing it due to a contracting change. We thank the city council for helping to resolve this issue. The language proposed in the council member's memo will help ensure such a situation does not happen again. We also emphasize that a collective bargaining agreement must be legitimately negotiated and agreed to by both the workers and the employer. A document unilaterally created or imposed by the employer is not an equivalent to workers exercising their collective voice to speak for themselves. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this item.
Ariel, followed by Erica. Ariel. Okay, we're going to move on to Erica, followed by Feluina.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Mahan and City Council, for your time and attention today. My name is Erica Valentine. I am the political director for UA Local 393. We represent 3,100 plumbers, pipe fitters, steam fitters, and HVACR technicians in Santa Clara and San Benito County. I am also a longtime resident of San Jose, California. Thank you for your time to visit this important issue and your careful considerations of the leadership opportunity that we have to take a stand against exploitation of workers. We are here to ask each one of you to vote in support of Councilmember Kamai, Candelas, and Cohen's memo dated 4/7/2023. To add public works, to also make sure that it includes the types of wage theft violations that are common in construction, like CWPAs and BOFE judgments, and protective collective bargaining for janitorial and security contracts so that workers do not have their union rights taken away from them. All of these requirements are important because they ensure that construction workers on city contracts are protected by covering the types of wage theft claims that are common in construction. Wage theft is important to me because I have lived in San Jose for over 20 years and have seen the deaths and the theft that happens without these protections. Ultimately, the public pays the price for the crimes of others while they profit. The wage theft policy before us today will not only save the lives of innocent workers, but also help us create opportunities for our youth to live and work in our area. It also helps our city remain safe and leads the nation to ensure that the bad actors realize they will not be able to commit wage theft in our county and our city or anywhere else in the world. Thank you for your time.
Feluina, followed by Esteban.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Feluina Opiso Mondina, San Jose resident, a member of Philippine Association of Workers and Immigrants, or POWIs, and the Wage Theft Coalition. On behalf of my community, I am here in support of the wage theft prevention memo by Vice Mayor Kamai and Councilmembers Candelas and Cohen. Low-wage Filipino workers in the county and in the city are mostly caregivers who are victims of outrageous wage theft, especially the undocumented workers who often work as live-in caregivers. For these workers, filing a wage theft claim is a stressful process, and many cannot even collect after winning a judgment. Strengthening San Jose's wage theft policy to cover public works and to also encompass final administrative decision would empower workers to collect and deter businesses from committing wage theft. We also join the call for the city council to protect collective bargaining rights for workers on janitorial and security contracts and the enactment of a responsible construction ordinance. San Jose can do better and will be at the forefront nationally in protecting the rights of the working people and in empowering them. Thank you.
Esteban, followed by Brian. Esteban.
Hello, sorry. Good afternoon, honorable mayor and city council. My name is Esteban Butts. I'm a member with SEIUUSWW, and I am calling in support of Councilmember Candelas, member for wage theft. The wage theft prevention policy passed in San Jose in 2016 is the goodst first step by but least some big loophole. As is, the policy does not cover city construction projects, public works, at all. It also fails to adequately protect janitorial and security workers when the city is contracting out that work. Construction, janitorial, and security are among the industries where workers are most likely to be victims of wage theft. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this item.
Brian, followed by Ruth.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for your time and attention today. My name is Brian Pores, and I'm a business agent for UA Local 393, representing over 3,100 plumbers, pipe fitters, steam fitters, and HVACR service technicians in Santa Clara and San Benito County. We appreciate your attention to this important issue. We really see this as a fantastic opportunity to provide the leadership necessary to take a stand against the exploitation of workers. We are here to ask each one of you to vote in support of Councilmember Kamai, Candelas, and Cohen's memo dated 4/7/2023 to add public works, to make sure that it includes the type of wage theft violations that are common in construction, and to protect collective bargaining for janitorial and security contracts. All these requirements are important because it directs staff to finally develop the responsible construction ordinance to protect construction workers on private projects, which has been stalled since February 2020. Unfortunately, I have been the victim of wage theft in the past and have been subjected to work in unsafe and have been subjected to work in unsafe conditions that nearly cost me my life on two separate occasions. So this item hits close to home for me. Thankfully, since becoming a skilled and trained union member, I've been able to comfortably support my family and live in the same jurisdiction that I work in. Most importantly, I was shown what safe working conditions really are, and I received the training needed to ensure I went home to my family safely after work. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Ruth followed by David.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Ruth Silver Tob. I'm the supervising attorney of the Alexander Community Law Center at Santa Clara University Law School, and I coordinate the Wage Theft Coalition. I started the Wage Theft Coalition in 2014 because at our clinic, I saw six workers who had judgments from the Labor Commission that were unpaid, and that had become a pattern at our clinic, and it really tore my heart out. And I realized we needed to do more. And so so many organizations came together and advocated for this wage theft policy. Initially, the policy was a strong policy, but it lacked public works. And we've been advocating for public works to be included. It is included. The problem with this revision with regard to public works is the wording, the clear wording there is judgment. Labor Commission judgments. Quapas, which are the only type of remedy you get for public works, is not a judgment, and either is Bofi. And that's for private construction. The other ones for public construction. We need you to fix that and use those words there, even though we have had assurances they'll be included. We need it to be written. Second of all, there's an error in the Candelaus memo and Kamay memo. It should say two in five years that are paid and one in five years, not three years, that is paid, and hopefully that'll be corrected. Also, I agree with the janitorial speaker that an imposed grievance procedure is not an equivalent. We need a collective bargaining agreement. We also need to move forward on the responsible construction ordinance with due speed. Thank you.
David followed by Forrest.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. I'm speaking today for the 30,000 members of the Santa Clara and San Benito Counties Building and Construction Trades Council in support of the memo from council members Candelaus, Kamay, and Cohen. For those of us who have never experienced wage theft, it may be hard to understand or grasp. But as someone who has been victimized by wage theft more than once before I had the opportunity to join a union, I can tell you that in the construction industry, wage theft is an everyday problem for many workers. Wage theft doesn't stop at harming the workers, though. It also hurts the families, and it hurts the responsible contractors that do not steal from their workers by making it harder to compete. Victims of wage theft are less likely to have stable housing or regular health care and are often forced to turn to public assistance. And wage theft also robs local governments of taxes, which harms all of us who are forced to either make up the difference or to accept the consequences of the underfunding. Contractors who are guilty of wage theft are often guilty of other crimes as well. Low-road contractors combine wage theft, workers' compensation, insurance fraud, and tax evasion as a regular practice, and they push out the good, responsible contractors that we want on our projects here in San Jose. And when workers do file complaints, they face retaliation and shrinking job opportunities. Additionally, the court awards are extremely hard to collect. The city of San Jose has a wage theft policy in place, and I am very happy to see that construction soon will no longer be excluded. The memo from council members Candelaus, Kamay, and Cohen will help to ensure that the existing protections are not weakened with the same pen that seeks to include construction in the policy. We urge the council to support this memo. Thank you, and thanks to everyone who is here today to support and protect exploited workers.
Forrest followed by Will.
Hello, Mayor Mahan and honorable council members. My name is Dr. Forrest Peterson. I'm a staff research affiliate at SEFI. It's a center in Stanford Engineering where I'm assigned the task to support the Wage Theft Coalition. Prior to Stanford, I was a project engineer with Granite Construction on large prevailing wage infrastructure projects. Through that experience, I'm familiar with the value of the skilled and trained building trades. I co-authored the SEFI technical report titled Wage Theft in Low-Wage Industries. It's low-wage because the skilled and trained high-wage workforce represented by labor unions don't have a wage theft problem. Ninety-nine percent of wage theft in the construction industry affects the low-wage, unskilled, non-union construction workforce. The non-union workforce is where the theft problem is. The memo and letters in front of you understate the scale of the problem. The SEFI technical report used state and federal violation records to find over 8,000 wage theft cases in Santa Clara County's construction industry affecting over 12,000 employees and amounted to 46.6 million in total unpaid wages, an average of $3,800 in back wages per employee. That does not include the civil wage and penalty assessments and Bureau of Field Enforcement citations. When those are included, the numbers are much higher. The violation record is known and available, as noted by your Office of Equality Assurance Manager, Chris Hickey. With a level playing field umpired by Labor Standards Enforcement, a skilled and trained workforce can thrive as a healthy community and a safe career pathway for the youth of San Jose. Thank you.
Will followed by Yvette.
Good afternoon, mayor and members of the council. My name is Will Smith. I'm a business agent for IBW Local 332. We service all of Santa Clara County with over 3,500 members, many of them that live and work right here in the city of San Jose. I'm urging the council to be supportive of the memo by Vice Mayor Kamay, Councilmember Candelaus, and Councilmember Cohen. Wage theft, as David Beany had mentioned, runs rampant every day, not only through the city of San Jose, but throughout our country, unfortunately. And I would hate for the city of San Jose, the city that I was born and raised in, to have the type of stain that it suffered a few years back from slavery towers, where not only wage theft was committed, but they're actually imprisoning workers. I would hate to see anything like that ever happen again in the history of San Jose. Wage theft is personal for me because I have a nephew who works with a non-union electrical company. He worked on a nearby city at a nearby stadium. Pretty sure we know where I'm talking about, but he worked there. They offered him to work, I think, 24 hours on payroll, and the other 16 hours, they paid him cash. So there was tax evasion there. He also lost his benefits because he no longer was working full-time on the payroll. So there's lots of tricky ways that they commit wage theft. And once again, these are low-road contractors. As Dr. Forrest mentioned, these are low-road contractors that take this approach. So I'm urging, urging, just like so many people on this call, for the council to support the memo of Vice Mayor Kamay, Councilmember Candelaus, as well as Councilmember Cohen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Have a nice day.
Yvette followed by Derek.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. Thank you for this time. My name is Yvette Simon, and I work at Valley Transportation Authority. I've been working here for 15 years as a vaultroom worker. I'm one step above the janitors, but I'm here to ask you to support the revision of the wage theft prevention policy. Currently in San Jose, it's easier for an employer to get away with stealing wages from working people than it is for even one of those people to receive support and getting paid what they're owed. We cannot allow this exploitation to continue. Even when workers overcome the odds to speak up and go through the whole intimidating process to report the wage theft, file a claim, get a hearing, and get a ruling, finding their employer guilty of wage theft, most workers who win their cases still don't get paid. Eighty-three percent of workers who receive a favorable wage theft judgment from the State Division of Labor Standards Enforcement never receive a penny. It is time to make necessary changes to San Jose's wage theft policy in order to close the gaps that have allowed this exploitation against janitor and security USWW workers to continue. I urge you to support the memo from Kamay, Candelaus, and Cohen, which takes necessary steps to protect workers from wage theft. Thank you for your time. I speak for SEIU521 and the South Bay Labor Council, as are soon to be delegate. And thank you for your time and have a good day.
Derek followed by Tajinder.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, honorable counsel. My name's Derek. Pronouns are he, they. I'm a District 5 resident, a senior organizer at Sacred Heart, and also a member of SEIU521. We're here in support of the memo put out by Councilmember Candelaus, Kamay, and Cohen, and I'm also calling in solidarity with our janitorial and security workers at USWW, and really in solidarity with all the workers who have been calling in. Workers of all stripes in our community are truly concerned by this huge crime wave of wage theft in our city because they're literally stealing money that workers earned. I also just wanted to say that I hope that whatever shape this policy takes, that it means that residents in each of your districts, council members, workers who have experienced wage theft know that they have a council member that they can call and depend on, and that elite interests won't hold any of you back from supporting your residents who also built this city and make this city work. Thank you for your time. I yield the rest.
Tajinder.
Hi, good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Tajinder. I'm a member of SEIUUSWW. I'm a board of director member. I'm calling in support of the council member's memo on wage theft. We need to do much more in our city to protect, empower working people, uplift, and reasonable business that pay their worker fairly and prevent to prosecute wage theft. That's why local action like San Jose Wage Theft Policy are so important to hold the bad actor accountable when they have broken the law. We urge you to support the memo from Vice Mayor Kamay and Councilmember Candelaus and Chahan to protect collective bargaining for janitor. That they fought for every time the contract is paid. Thank you so.
Okay, back to council.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Thanks to all the members of the community who weighed in. I want to thank city staff for your work on this. Obviously, these changes have been a long time coming. It's obviously critically important that as a city, when we contract out, that we ensure that workers are being treated fairly and paid fairly for all the work that they're doing. This is a very important issue. I want to acknowledge, I know a few members of the public spoke to things that are not covered by the policy, and there is certainly more work to do here, including around ensuring workers are aware of their rights and that we enforce the rules on the books. That being said, I think that these changes are a valuable step forward. I think they are meaningful progress in updating the policy. I think staff's recommendation is very strong, and the group memo that was put forward also makes sense to me. I'll be supporting the group memo. And I think this is going to be, it's going to need to be an ongoing process of listening to workers and contractors and continuing to iterate our approach as we continue to improve how we protect workers. But I do think this is a meaningful step forward, and I just really want to thank staff for all the time that went into bringing forward these recommendations, as well as the authors of the group memo, which my team also collaborated on and I'm supportive of. So with that, I'm going to turn to my colleagues for comments and questions, and we'll start with Councilmember Candelaus.
Thank you, mayor. I too want to start off by thanking staff for their presentation, their work on this, as well as the speakers who came out today to speak and voice their support and their comments on the policy. As we know, wage theft is a serious problem that affects millions of workers across our country. So serious that in 2016, this city council made it one of its top priorities. Wage theft hurts workers and their families who struggle to make ends meet and are more apt to fall into poverty as a result. It hurts our economy as a whole because our workers are what keep our businesses thriving and ultimately impacting those who are most vulnerable in our community, including low-wage workers, immigrants, and people of color, who are often the most exploited and have the least amount of power to fight back against wage theft. Specifically, those in security and janitorial workers, when we come into work, they're the folks who are looking through bags, making sure we're safe. And when we leave our office, they're the ones cleaning up after my team and myself. So that's a lot of work that they do. I think the staff memo suggests adding the phrase of collective bargaining or other documentation, allowing bidders to claim that they will develop some alternative approach that is not a collective bargaining agreement but is equivalent to one. You know, I think that language should not be used. It's ambiguous and further opens the possibility that companies would mandate provisions that are harmful to workers. Contractors could argue that anti-worker provisions are equivalent to a bona fide collective bargaining agreement which protects workers' rights to their wages and therefore undermining the intent of our policy. Collective bargaining agreements would protect workers if a contractor failed to comply with an arbitration award ordering the payment of back wages. A union would be able to petition a court for an order reaffirming that award. Currently, workers are often left to fend for themselves due to the state's inability to enforce its wage theft laws just because of the sheer amount of lack of enforcement workers. We know that. You know, I also want to thank Vice Mayor Kamay and Councilmember Cohen for their work on this. And also, as the mayor mentioned, his staff. You know, I think we worked hard on a memorandum that looked to address these concerns. Our memo also directs staff to return to council later this year with the responsible construction ordinance. In 2020, after the horrific story that somebody mentioned of silvery towers or slavery towers, is how they're commonly known in our community. The council took action by developing staff to develop a responsible construction ordinance. Construction workers in San Jose have waited long enough. It's time, you know, the elected officials match that rhetoric with action to tackle it. We need a wage theft ordinance protecting workers on public works projects and private construction projects as well. As we continue to build our city with more housing and continue the economic boom of our region, we need to make this responsible construction ordinance a priority. Before I move our memo, as stated by Ruth Silver Tob in comments, I do want to point to a technical fix in the memo to be consistent with the past five years prior instead of the last three years. And the second page, 1BI, the second to last sentence should read the past five years prior instead of past three years for consistency's sake. That being said, I'll move our memo with that fix.
Thanks, council member. Got the second from the vice mayor here. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Councilman Ortiz next.
Thank you, mayor, and I also want to thank our great staff for all of your hard work on the issue, as well as many of the individuals here in support of the memo, as well as those who called in. The revisions we're considering today are in many ways long overdue. I applaud the dedication of the Wage Theft Coalition and the work they did to bring us to this point. While the 2020 Wage Theft Prevention Policy gave us something to build on, the lack of enforcement for public works contracts is a critical gap in desperate need for addressing. All data available shows us that construction is one of the main industries most impacted by wage theft. It has nearly been six years since the Federal Labor Department publicly announced the disgusting details of the slavery towers that my colleague, Councilmember Candelaus, that my colleague, Councilmember Candelas, mentioned. Workers being held against their will, forced to work on a construction site, and living in an actual shipping container while their wages were being stolen from their employer here, not far away in some foreign country, but here in the heart of Silicon Valley. That particular gruesome example exists in context of permissiveness regarding wage theft. So everyday working families are being robbed by their employer, often with public money, working on public contracts. It's the same that unfortunately our city extended tax breaks to developers before we could address this scourge on our economy. But it's important that we continue to work on this and get this policy right. I want to make sure that bad actor firms can't skate by on technicalities and continue to steal the hard-working dollars from the workers here in our city. And I want to make sure that this policy also isn't enforced in a way that has negative impacts that impact the workers every day on the work sites. So I'm glad to see also, which is a new addition, the precautions being made for our facility workers in janitorial and security services. These are hard-working people whose services are essential, and unfortunately, I feel historically, they haven't gotten the due credit for their services that they provide. But that's why I'm supporting the Councilmember's, Councilmember Candelas, Vice Mayor Kamay, and Cohen memo. But I do have some questions for staff. We did hear from public comments today about a, and I don't want to say it's for sure, but a specific contractor that may subcontract here with the city of San Jose. I believe the name was Premier Recycling. In regards to our wage theft concerns, right? What about subcontractors? Do we have tools in order to enforce wage theft issues with subcontractors with the city?
So two things. One, first of all, thanks for the question. A contractor that is currently engaged with us or one that is going to be engaged with us, two different scenarios. So the firm that we have a contract with is responsible for all of their subs, and subcontractors can have claims of wage theft that Chris's team would enforce as well. Claims can come in if they are subcontractors to city contracts. Claims can come in, and Chris regularly enforces wage theft against subcontractors that are on city contracts now. As a gate, as the ones that are coming in on the bidders, it would be a similar scenario. That's why in the next 90 days, we'll be putting forth, what are those operational steps that we're doing for those bidding on our projects and our work? What are those gates? How will we review their proposals and any subs that they might be with?
Thank you so much. So I guess a shorter question would be, in light of what we've heard during public comment in the city council meeting, is there a way to look into this in regards to these allegations?
So I noted down which particular union. If the members are still here when they're done, we certainly can get information to Chris, and Chris's team can investigate, yes.
Okay, great. No, thank you so much. I just want to make sure if something is on public record, I don't want to just put our hands up. I want to make sure we're looking into it. That being said, I'm full support of the memo. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Kamay.
Thank you so much, and I really want to extend a deep appreciation to how much work the staff has put in because I know I met with you several times. I know others have met with you, and it's been sort of this ongoing process. The mayor mentioned that, you know, this is by no means perfect, and we will continue this ongoing move towards addressing the wage theft issue and hopefully continue to make it better and better to ensure protections for our workers. So I just want to thank you. I'd like to thank the speakers today sharing your thoughts on this issue. It is critically important. I think that no wage theft in San Jose should be tolerated, period. This is something that I think that is, you know, there are many different ways in which, you know, as has been mentioned today, that people have suffered, and that should not be the case. And, you know, when people look at San Jose, the city of San Jose, they need to know that we will not tolerate it here. So I am delighted to have worked with our team here, and I look forward to having my colleagues also support the motion.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Appreciate your engagement on the issue. We'll go to Councilmember Batra.
Thank you, staff, for coming up with this policy changes, which I hope are going to improve our ability to prevent wage theft and also be able to enforce so that we can get these bad actors out of the business. Okay. I do have some questions. The memo which has been written by our colleagues, could you comment on that? Does that enhance the thing? Or do you see any restrictions on you being able to do your business?
The proposals that are from the Kamay, Candelas, and Cohen memo, we should be able to implement all of the items that are in there as recommended, yes.
Item number one and item number two.
Item number one and number two, yes. Our goal would be, so under item number one, that's for the current wage theft, and the second one would be to negotiate and have conversations and come back to council with the responsible construction ordinance in November this year, yes.
And you can read the timeline.
God willing, yes.
Okay, all right. And what are the implications of item number three?
What are the implications of item number three?
Does that help you better make the things happen or there's any kind of conflict with anything else in your policies?
Conflict? That's a broad question. We will, so as requested, we will study the implications. And my intention would be given here that we would come back with either a report, either verbal or a written report to council with what we're seeing or thinking on this because it was given to us to go back and study if that change would impact us. Not studied, so we will study and come back and report back to council, and we'll work with the city manager at her direction as to what form and format she would like for that to happen.
Okay, and there's no timeline mention in there. What would be your estimate when you would be able to come back with that?
Since we have the mighty staff of Chris and his team working on all of these policies, it would be a bit of a stretch. We do have other negotiations that we'll be engaging in towards the end of the year after the responsible construction ordinance development. We'll do it as expeditiously as we can. We'll have to look to see what it means. If I had to best guess right now, if you had to hold me to it, I'd ask for spring of next year, but I understand faster is better.
Okay, so you have the good fortune that there's no date mentioned in there?
Well, we're not done yet, so we'll see.
So, but I was looking that maybe this is going to come at the same time when you have the item number two, 2023, November. Yeah, but it looks like you're looking for a longer time window on that.
Again, we've not had a lot of time to deep thought on that one to see what the implications of what that study would look like and what kind of reporting back would mean, and so what would be meaningful and useful for the council to provide any other guidance. We haven't spent a lot of time thinking on this item since February, Friday, when this came out, so.
Yes, I would support the memo with the one request that we have a date for when you will come and tell us the date about, when you'll come back, the date for the date, okay? So which is, you know, when you come back to tell us then, hey, when would you bring the update to the policy? Or the report rather, not update to the policy.
Is that a motion?
I think it's a friendly amendment. I don't think it's a motion.
Can you restate the friendly amendment, councilmember?
Finally, item number three, which says, "Direct staff to study if a condition for successful bidders to demonstrate that workers are covered by the collective bargaining agreements could also be applied to construction in the future."
What about this? If I could ask, if I could take the leverage since nobody else is taking the date, I would like to ask for maybe March next year. The reason being is we'll be in discussions on our project labor agreements as well, and those also have implications of collective bargaining agreements as well. There'll be a lot of learning in these discussions, but we'll work with our partners on that. I think that would, I would like to have that to inform, and we can come back with an info memo. If you want us to come back sooner with a progress payment, that sounds good too. But, you know, if I had a final thought on it and given what workload's in front of us on these items, I'd push for like March next year.
Well, I mean, as the maker of the motion, with all due respect, I think I want to allow the maximum flexibility for staff. That's why when we crafted the memorandum, we were thoughtful in our approach to not hamstring or constrict our staff's ability to be able to work judiciously with the council and/or with folks. That's why we said in the future. But while I appreciate the consideration, I want to keep our memorandum as is and the motion that we, that I, with the memorandum that I moved because of the thought and time we spent thinking through those variables. Thank you, councilmember. So that's, no.
I didn't try to hamstring them. I didn't put any constraint on them other than ask for a date for the date, which is to come back and tell us the date when you will be able to give the report. And I'm not sure why is that amendment not acceptable.
Okay, I think the councilmember answered no. We have an answer from staff on their rough timing, so you are always welcome to make a substitute motion, but otherwise, we're going to move on. Do you have any other comments or questions, councilmember?
I make the substitute motion then, with the date.
That would include a specific date?
With the date for the date, not forgetting the work completed.
Okay, is there a second on a substitute motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is the previous motion with, that has been amended to, and can you just restate what you've added, councilmember?
Yeah. Direct staff to study if a condition for successful bidders to demonstrate that workers are covered by collective bargaining agreements could also be applied to construction in the future. Staff to report back when they will be able to bring such a report out.
I think that is actually covered by the initial motion. Did you want to add a specific date?
Yes, sir, I would add a specific date. Come back by November 2023.
Can I ask staff again to just restate your, the date that you proposed? Or the rough timing?
Just out of clarity, is the request that we're coming back to tell when we're going to have the date in November? Or is we're coming back with the findings of the report in November?
No. In November, you're coming back to tell us when you will have the report.
Yes, I believe we can come back by November and say when we would have a final report on our findings.
And councilmember, thank you. Just so we don't have to have an agendized item at the council meeting, would an informational memo from city staff be acceptable?
Yes.
All right, that's the motion. Anything else, Councilmember Batra?
Not at the moment.
Okay, Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, mayor, councilmember. Thank you to staff, local union, bargaining units, and councilmember who wrote the memorandum. I think we all can agree that wage theft is unacceptable. We live in a country that is built on principle, justice, and fairness. And as councilmember, we all sworn an oath to protect our residents and all our workers from wage theft. That's including human trafficking and oppression. Wage theft is an important issue that we need to correctly address and protect both our union and non-union workers. A policy need to be correctly written and not allowed for a legal challenge to overturn, which could hurt our workers. I believe it is necessary to defer item 3.3 for a time adequate for the city attorney and staff to further study the content of both memos. I am concerned at the legality of the update potential breaking federal laws. Specifically, with the potential the city would mandatory disqualify a contractor based slowly on the fact that they are not a union with a collective bargaining agreement. It is my belief that federal laws say the city cannot interfere with a worker to join a union or not. Because we do not want to pass something which may be illegal, may be overturned. We need to better understanding of the proposal on this issues, and therefore, I motion for this item to be deferred for a period sufficient for the city staff to study further and evaluate and report back to the council so that we can protect all of the workers in this city. And I motion that we defer this until four weeks from now to get a little further clarification regarding federal laws violation.
Thanks, councilmember. So just to clarify, and Nora should correct me if I've got any of this wrong, but we have a substitute motion, which we will have to vote on first.
Correct.
If that fails, there's an underlying, there was an underlying or initial motion that we would also vote on. At that point, if both fail, I think we can entertain additional motions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
So I just want to clarify that the motion on the floor, I'm sorry? Just to clarify for everyone, the motion on the floor accepts the staff recommendation, accepts the group memo by councilmembers Candelas, Cohen, and Vice Mayor Kamay, and has a slight modification that staff should issue an info memo by November to let us know when you would come back with that additional analysis, which tentatively is targeting spring of next year. Okay, so that's the motion on the floor. Unless, Councilmember Dwan, you had any follow-up questions, I'm going to move on to Councilmember Foley.
I just got one follow-up question for staff. Is it clear that under this new policy, are we violating any federal laws protecting both unionized and non-unionized workers?
I would ask the city attorney to answer that question.
I'm going to turn to the city attorney. Could you just repeat the question?
The question is, are we violating federal laws by not protecting the non-unionized workers?
Thank you for your question, councilmember. I think the purpose of the language in both the draft policy as well as the memo that's being considered by the council, both are intended to protect both unionized workers as well as workers who are not unionized, but we will require certain protections for those workers. So the idea is to allow protections in both contexts.
Part of the memorandum stated that the city would mandatory disqualify a contractor based slowly on the fact that they are not a union with a collective bargain unit or agreement.
That I don't think is a correct reading either of the draft policy or the memo, councilmember. The idea is not to disqualify for that reason alone, but based on issues with respect to wage theft and to address concerns about ensuring that workers are properly paid. There's language in the policy requiring, if you don't have a collective bargaining agreement, that you have another, that you have other documentation covering wages, hours, and a process to address the potential for wage theft.
Just a last question for you, council. Is Robert Rules allow three motion at a time?
Usually the primary and the substitute. Usually the primary and the substitute, but I am trying to check and confirm. There's a question as to whether or not a deferral, a request to defer takes precedent. I'm trying to check on that right now.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, councilmember. Councilor Foley?
Okay, now I'm really confused on what we're actually voting on or taking a look at voting. I frankly believe a motion to defer takes priority, but it does require a two-thirds vote. I've been trying to research it myself online. However, I don't know that we had a second for the deferment, so even if it does, then it dies because we didn't have a second. That's my parliamentarian training of many years ago. But I really want to know what we are -- we're trying to accomplish an update of our wage theft policy to have it apply to public works projects as well. That's at its very basic level. I know it's a little bit more than that. Isn't that what we're trying to accomplish?
Couple things. One, public works would be included as opposed to excluded this time. Reasons for that can be shared, but that's that one point. And also focusing on the California Labor Commissioner's findings and reports, those areas, and focusing there in terms of what we're using as mandatory screens, be a little bit more declarative as what those mandatory disqualifications are. And so as in the current motion, there's different clarifications here, and we can understand them.
Okay, thank you. Which really means we should be adopting this wage theft policy today and not delaying it. I understand the reason to come back with another date, but you're going to do that in an info memo. So I'm just not sure, councilmember, the reason to delay a meeting, a decision today. I believe we should just approve the underlying motion, which is just to go forward today and have you come back with an info memo with more information later, which is what you're going to do anyway. Isn't that correct?
Slight nuance, and I'd have the councilmember clarify what he's intending with his deferral and the reason why. We think we can implement as it is, as what's described. We understand what's being directed to us and when we'll be reporting back and what we'll implement. If there's a deferral for a different question, I think the councilmember should identify what that specific reason is, not staff.
Okay, thank you.
According to the memo, I'll clarify, the contractor with CBA would be exempt, and other contract would be disqualified. Am I correct on that?
Under two particular industries, there's a -- and this is in the memo that's presented here. This is on their first page. A collective bargaining agreement or other specific things need to be provided. It's not mandatory disqualification for those two particular industries of janitorial and security guards.
So just, definitely you can have an opportunity to continue down that line of inquiry, but we are in Councilor Foley's time, so I'm going to, if you want to raise your hand again, councilmember.
Will do.
Welcome back around to you. Appreciate the question. I want to let Councilor Foley continue.
I appreciate that, thank you. Tony, could you read back what the substitute motion is?
Which one? The actual?
I can describe.
The actual substitute, the councilmember Arjun just made.
Yes.
Sorry, councilmember Batra just made.
I can tell you, I didn't write it down word for word, but I have the Candelas memo and then directing staff to release a report back date by info memo in November 2023. That's the gist of it.
Let me just clarify. It passes, it is a motion to approve the staff rec, the group memo from Candelas, Cohen, and Kame, and direct staff to issue an info memo by November of 2023 to give a date by which they would return for further analysis on the -- on item three. Thank you.
Great, I appreciate that. And so the info member we get in November will say March 2024.
Unless something has changed.
Effectively like that. But okay, then I can get behind the substitute because it's very little change except for the info memo added into it. Thank you. I just think it's really critical we move forward with this wage theft policy today without delay. Thank you.
Great, thanks, councilmember. Okay, Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't sure I needed to add anything to my esteemed colleagues, Councilmember Candelas and Vice Mayor Kame. I worked with them and others on this memo, and I think that we're making good progress here on giving the city a little more flexibility, also applying our wage theft ordinance to more contracts, but making sure that we're holding people accountable for their behavior. You know, we already have deferred this item by two weeks until today because we needed extra time to make sure we had all these details. Our team of three offices worked closely with Nora and the attorney's office to make sure that we had a legally defensible policy, and I'll just ask Nora to clarify one more time. You know, we put in language that specifically says that if you have these violations two in five years, you would be disqualified unless, and the unless is, you have a collective bargaining agreement or you can demonstrate ways in which you are going to protect workers. Doesn't require, there's no, there's nothing here that says somebody without a collective bargaining agreement will ever be excluded from being able to bid on contracts. Is this a legally defensible policy?
Thank you, councilmember. We believe that it is, and we had included very similar language in the draft proposed policy. And this tweaks it, the language in your memo tweaks it a bit, but we believe that it's defensible as a policy. And while we're on talking about motions, there wasn't a motion to amend, there was an underlying motion, a motion, a substitute motion. Essentially, the motion to defer is a motion to table, and that can take precedence, but there's not a second.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just remind Councilmember Dwan that we had this issue, we had a very strict policy, which excluded anybody who had a violation or had two violations in five years. That led to a problem when we were executing the security contract, and you wrote a memo, actually, when we were accepting the security contract, touting the fact that now with this collective bargaining agreement, we have protected workers. And so this is basically codifying the procedure we went through then to make sure that we don't run into these problems in future bidding. So I appreciate the conversations you had, Councilmember Dwan, before in the security contract, and hope that we will protect more workers with a policy that is clearer and easier for our city to implement as we go out for bid. As far as Councilmember Batra's motion, obviously, I don't really believe there's much material difference, you know, adding that date or not. I'm not, you know, it doesn't really matter, you know, if we hear in November what they think, when they think they can come back. Honestly, in my opinion, the most important thing we want Public Works Department to focus on is item number two of the memo, not item number three, which is coming back with the responsible construction ordinance. The date of when we're going to decide how to implement this in other types of contracts, to me, is secondary. We have to get that responsible construction ordinance in place, so my hope is that we will come back this fall with some discussion of that responsible construction ordinance, and I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Great, thank you, councilmember. Councilor Torres?
Great, thank you. I would like to say thank you to the Teamsters and our other labor allies and our community members who came out and spoke, as well as the Wage Theft Coalition, who has continued to push our city to create a very strong wage theft policy. So with that, you know, I support the memo that my colleagues, Vice Mayor Kame, Councilmember Cohen, and Councilmember Candelas wrote. This is a major step forward in protecting our workers, especially janitorial and our security guards, so I will be supporting, I will be supporting their memo and the motion. So our working-class community, this is life or death, and we can't continue to kick the can down the road. Too many lies are at stake, and so that's why I'll be supporting the memo. So thank you.
Great, thanks, councilmember. Okay, I don't see any other hands. At the risk of further complicating this, colleagues, I have a very minor friendly amendment, and I may not even need the amendment, though it might be best to have it. I just want to confirm, and I'm actually going to ask Councilmember Candelas first, just want to confirm that on rec. 2, that the list of orgs there is not in any way exclusive, and that it would be in keeping with the spirit of the recommendation to also, of course, go speak with affordable housing developers and commercial construction companies and other market participants as well. Rec. 2 of your memo, I think you list some of the organizations that we should confer with as we look at the responsible contractor, responsible construction ordinance.
So it would be to coordinate with, what would be the language?
I just want to make sure that your interpretation of that was not that that was an exclusive list of people who staff would be reaching out to as we're working through that ordinance.
Yeah, it doesn't, the list, the list is, well, this is what we talked about with, you know, I would be okay with it if, you know, the councilmember Cohen, Vice Mayor Kame are okay with it as well.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're speaking broad. I assume that this was not an exclusive list. I just wanted to clarify that you, we want to talk to stakeholders broadly who are involved and who would be affected by the ordinance.
I don't think we would ever come back with an ordinance that hasn't been vetted through all the different stakeholders. I mean, I don't think that would be proper city procedure.
Great. Just wanted to make, because it wasn't in the language, it was a very explicit list of a few organizations specifically. I just want to make clear that that would, that you imagine that to not be in any way exclusive, and that we would broadly speak to all of the stakeholders who would be affected by the ordinance. Okay, great. So with that, and Councilor Batra, are you comfortable with that? Just making clear that rec. 2 is broadly applicable? Thank you.
Yeah, very happily accept that.
Great. Councilor Dwan?
Yes, I accept it.
Great, thank you. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Tony. Thanks, everybody, for your work on this. We are on to item 5.1, which is the extension of temporary closure of Spring Street, Ashbury Street, and Irene Street. I don't believe we have any presentation, so we'll go to public comment first.
Okay, I have in-person speakers, Gail, Joe, and Patricia. You can come down in any order. Again, that's Gail, Osmer, Joe Ortiz, and Patricia Gonzalez.
Nice to see everybody. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents living in RVs at Columbus Park. I brought a couple of the residents, but I do have to say a couple of things. If you decide not to keep this open, where are they going? Let me tell you a story about the VTA safe parking site at Santa Teresa. It's about four months behind schedule. Nothing is being done right now. I'm on a call every two weeks. They have seven people from D10 and D2, seven people. And then they have seven people from Columbus, and they're not going outside of D2 and D10. You know, I know you have your restrictions or whatever and the money from FAA, but where are people going to go? Do you want them to go in your neighborhoods? You know, Councilman Torres, do you want them to go to your house? Vice Mayor, whatever, where are they going? There's no place. Couldn't you just let them stay until another safe parking? The one of VTA is, it needs to be looked into because it's long overdue, and there's only seven people, and I mean seven. Seven from there and only seven from, I mean, Columbus. Let's bring more people from Columbus into there and have them go there, because they don't have enough people. They've interviewed 31 people, and they're seven. They had 10 two weeks ago, now they have seven. So what is going on? We need to look into this, Mr. Councilperson, about what is really going on and why is it behind? There's no place for any of these people to go. Please kind of push it out, let them stay, and let's work on another safe parking for RVs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name's Joe Ortiz, I'm from Hampton City. It was fun working with you on Saturday, Mayor. When I first came here, I had both of my eyes and was healthily, but I've been here seven years and went to your doctors, and I'm now blind on my right side, so I cannot drive my vehicle or my trailer home, which is a nice BMW and a nice trailer. I'd love to drive them back home, but I can't until this is done with. So what do you do when you're stuck in a city like San Jose that has all this to help you? I get no help. Now they want me to leave the only area I can go, and the cops are saying, well, you're just going to have to move it. Well, what do I tell them? I tell them I'm blind and I'm not allowed to drive right now. You can't drive half-blind. They go, well, that's your problem. So they give you a little home. So I go to a little home and I have to come back because my trailer's going to get broken into and my car stolen, so I got to go back there. So they tell you, you have to move. I was there three months, and not one person came to help me fill out the disability papers that I needed or drive me down there because I don't know where to go, and I'm blind, half-blind. Where is the help going to come? So all I'm doing now, income-wise, is going to the park where I live for $20 a week and help for one hour. That's $80 a month. It costs me $75 just to live on propane to keep my mobile home warm and gasoline in my car. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Francesca?
Thank you for this opportunity. I brought these folks here from Columbus. I wasn't planning on speaking, but Patricia, who was to speak, is just so rattled. She's not feeling very well. And, you know, that's part of living in an RV, you know. I just don't see the coordination, collaboration that these people deserve when you need to, you know, cordon off streets that people are living on. And so I implore you, we beg of you, we're asking, you know, in the most polite way is you have to come up with a plan that includes the move. So if they need to move off, there has to be a place to go. We're going to have this problem every time you close a street, you kick people out. That's just sweeping this problem under the rug, and it's so traumatizing. The way that the north side was to move was really only one block, but last week, both sides of Ashbury got tagged. And then it was just the one side, one block of Ashbury north side that needed to move. But Patricia, who was on the outskirts but on the north side, had to find somebody and pay them and move the van to the south side of the street, only to find out that now on April 19th, you want to extend and then start closing down all the streets in the Columbus area. So the money she paid to move to the south side is now wasted because we have to pay again. And when you, when the tow truck comes to confiscate anybody who didn't move on that one block that needed to move for a dog park, you don't even offer to move the people that needed to move. So they have to find ways of moving themselves, if it's a fifth-wheeler, if it's a fifth-wheeler that has to have a particular type of truck, that was one issue. Please get a plan.
Blair, followed by Paul.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks for the public speakers on today's item. I'm really surprised you don't have a, some sort of staff report today. I think an important concept of Mayor Mahan's administration, you know, and all this talk about accountability, there has to be concepts of consistency that I hope that he wants to better develop from the previous eight years of the Mayor Ricardo administration. That's an important concept to me, is how do we build upon the fact that government and community life can be a little crazy and a little kooky sometimes, and, you know, decisions that we can't do now, we can do in five months' time, but it decisions that we can't do now, we can do in five months' time, but it takes a lot of work and effort. And, I mean, we were talking very honestly about, you know, a few weeks ago, about the importance of safe RV programs, and, I mean, that really should be just a staff report on that subject today. And for you guys not to have that report, for Gail to have to sit here at public comment time pleading for that, and the other public comment person, it's embarrassing. I mean, we should just be talking honestly and straightforward. What is the future of the RV Safe Parking Program? And in San Diego, where I'm living, they're talking a lot about how San Jose is good at talking with each other, community and government, about their trash issues and creating dialogue and communication, and they want to really emulate that in their future as safe practices. I hope we can build on that and do the same and grow from that here in San Jose and really do this sort of consistent good work, which means you guys got to be talking openly about our good stuff, and you're not. I really get to it. Please. Thank you.
Paul, followed by Catherine.
Yes, also from a horseshoe. I guess it was kind of, it was, it was very naive of me to think that if you, if you work with the government as a citizen and to try to give information and experience that you have in a particular field, that working with government would create a system where the government would use their power coupled with the experiences of the citizenry, and that we would find solutions together because the laws that you pass or don't pass or irresponsible in addressing, that those wouldn't be allowed to happen. And I can see now, after six years of advocacy, I can see that there's a very clear intention on the part of the government, and the government literally is sociopathic. And sociopathic just means that it has no conscience. It has no, it has no moral, ethical, spiritual, there's nothing about government that is, despite the fact that it's ran by human beings. And that's the scary part. We're getting into a space where the government is acting and attacking the citizenry with absolutely no regard for human lives. None. Zero. Demonstrating an irresponsibility that you would never allow to happen in your own families, that you would never allow if you saw somebody doing it to someone else. But when the government is the one that is doing it to the citizen, all of a sudden you think that you can't be held accountable. You can be held accountable for what you do and don't do.
Good afternoon. I didn't really have comments planned, but I echo what the previous speakers have been saying. I just don't understand what is going on with all the sweeps and spending so much money to be so cruel to people, just constantly uprooting them and treating them like things. This has to stop. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you, Tony. Since we didn't have a staff presentation, can I just ask, does the extension of this temporary closure require the relocation of any lived-in vehicles? And if so, how many people would that impact? And can you tell us a little more?
Thank you, Mayor John Sisaroli, Director of Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services. No. So the closures, the closures would not happen until and unless a street was cleared. So if we got a piece of street cleared, we might close that off, but the action you're taking today doesn't then require or direct us, nor do we have plans to then go and abate all the people on these streets.
Okay, so no one would be moved from their current location as a result of this action?
Not as a result of this action today. This merely is extending something that's already been in place for a year and a half. It's the same exact thing. We would, we just never were able to close the streets because people were living on them. The only street that's been closed throughout this whole process is Spring Street north of Ashbury. It's a section that goes up to Heading. We've kept that permanently closed. All the other streets have people living on them around the park. This would be another year and a half of that extension, which actually lines up nicely with the future construction of a new park there, in which we would have to close down many of those streets. And in fact, Spring Street south to Taylor will no longer exist after the construction of the park. So some of those streets will go away, some will get turned into one-way, some will have to be closed for construction laydowns and things like that in about a year and a half's time. Again, this gives us the authority and ability to close it as it might come up or as we may need it, but this action, specifically today, does not require nor do we intend to use it to vacate people in the immediate future.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone. Appreciate it. Okay, Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. Just to space state that in a different way, this sounds like what it's doing is it's extending the authority, but not necessarily taking an action. It's saying for 18 more months, there's an authority to close it, but the, but it's a status quo for now until there's a plan and the ability to relocate people over time.
Yes, and we took some pains in the memo text itself to sort of talk about that, that fluid situation that's there, and that it's a tool that can be used, but it is not something that we're turning around and going to use right this minute.
Okay, thank you. And I'll, I always use these opportunities as we discuss RV parking to express both my frustration and optimism. And it's not, this is not necessarily for you anymore, John Yucca, but, but, you know, back in September to November, when, you know, when I stood up to a rabid group of neighbors while opening an RV parking site in North San Jose, and we did it for a short term, knowing and seeing that it can work, and I, never in my, never in my thoughts would we be this far into the future beyond that point without an adequate RV parking solution. I was hoping that by last year, we'd have it. I'm hoping that by this year. What I will say is, we're going to be having a discussion in the next month and a half about an exciting location and opportunity. There's in fact a community hearing coming up in another couple of weeks on a site where we will be opening RV parking in another location. At that point, I'm hopeful that we can focus on a plan to move people in a, in a smart and logical way. I will again remind people also that I don't believe that the, that the area on Spring and that area is, should be the number one priority. There are areas where RV parking is actually quite disruptive to businesses and residential areas where we should be focusing, and we've had that conversation here and at other committee meetings about some of those locations. I won't mention them by name right now, but we need to have a thoughtful plan about where we need to focus and how we're going to start to move people into some of these sites. But I'm hopeful that by this summer, we're going to have some locations open, and then this, this kind of discussion will be easier for us to have. So I will move acceptance of the staff report.
I will second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Great. Thanks, councilmember. I'm, I too am very much looking forward to the Santa Teresa Safe Park Site opening and glad that we are seeking out other locations because we know we're going to need more than that. Councilor Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for working on this memo. And I also want to thank the activists who come today to speak on behalf of the houseless community. Previously, I believe, last week, I had introduced a memo in regards to the Coyote Creek Flood Project, right, requesting that there would be some sort of a work plan created for the encampment residents to make sure that we're providing them or at least lining them up with services, housing, or some sort of rental support. I know that what we're voting on today isn't going to directly abate them or remove them from the site, but in the future, that may come before us. Is there opportunity for us to create a plan, a work plan similar to what we've done in other situations, to make sure that these individuals aren't just pushed to another area or pushed into the surrounding neighborhood residential areas?
Thank you, councilmember. I have to defer to my colleague, Jackie Morales-Frend, I believe is here.
Oh, re-asked my question? Yeah, no, thank you so much, Jackie, for walking down.
Can we make a plan for these people? Well, I think we first have to have available sites. So I don't want to be talking about making a plan if the site is not available because there's no plan that I could possibly make, because people who are living in RVs don't see themselves often as being homeless. They see the RV as really being their home, and so we end up having to work even more with people who live in RVs to first create opportunities for them to feel safe. And then often, they had some sort of triggering event where they were evicted or they somehow lost their housing, so there's a big fear of releasing, leaving the RV again, to go into an apartment or another location without knowing that they can return to the RV. So it does take more work, and definitely the first step, if we want a plan, we have to identify a site where we could actually move people to stop the rotating and the continued movement. So we do have a few sites available at the VTA place. We have been working with the council office, and we've identified, you know, over 31 RVs that are potentially can move into the new site, and we're holding seven that are at Columbus Park that are going to be potentially moving to the VTA site. But I think we're going to have to actually hear from you all regarding what are your priorities in terms of when we take the next group of RVs? Is it Columbus Park that we're going to be taking them from or where else? Because there are RVs all over the city.
I see. Okay. No, my line of questioning was just to make sure that as we abate, we're doing so in a way that's strategic and just not moving them to the area. Sounds like obviously, this is a complex issue. We need spots for them to go. Obviously, I support the establishment of safe parking programs, RV program sites, happy to collaborate to identify locations. But hopefully, when we do, if there is some abatement, we can make sure that these individuals are connected to some sort of resources so that we're not seeing them just spill into neighborhoods and things like that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, councilmember. Councilor Batra?
Thanks for whatever the work in this connection, and especially for today's request for the extension. Just want to clarify, I think you may have already stated it, but I want to hear it second time for the sake of everybody being on the same page. What we are approving today does not make anybody to be moved from wherever they may be living. Is that correct?
That is correct, councilmember.
Yeah. And it will eventually have an impact on some people, but that is somewhere about from here to a year and a half, somewhere between now and the year and a half. Is that right?
Yes, that's potentially the case. We don't know, obviously, a year and a half out in the future, what the area will look like or who will be there. Will it be more? Will it be less? Will we have found other solutions like Jackie has talked about? But yes, that's, that's roughly the timeline when construction on the park would begin, and it's a big project. So some of those roads are going to close or have to be used for construction.
Okay. And at that time, based on whatever these surroundings are, you would have a plan to get those people somewhere comfortably residing or moving to, and that would be all part of the plan there, right?
I was just conferring with my colleague. We actually did not say that. So we did not say that we would have a plan because the, in order to have a plan, we would have to have a site. So I would say at the time that we're getting closer, if there is a site available, we could certainly come back to you and say, council, there are, we're anticipating we're opening a site, or you have room available at this site. Would you like us to prioritize the residents that are currently there? I think I do want to also caution you about, like guaranteeing anything today, because especially if the, the site is not going to close for a year and a half. You know, what we already experienced at Columbus Park before was that when people heard we had a housing plan and we were moving people, a bunch of people moved into the site saying, great, this is an opportunity for me to get housed. It's a, and I completely understand why, but I think at this point, we do not want to be signaling, come to this area, because if you do, you will be able to obtain, guarantee a spot in one of our programs, because at this point, we don't have a spot, and we don't want to encourage more people to move here when, when we can't offer those resources.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. I, I think that's pretty valuable, and I've been concerned about that even when we talked about the creek or the valley water work you're doing. Concerned about when we are going to remove that encampment because we're going to do the creek work, and since the road is not going to close or the creek is not going to close for a while, yes, there would be possibly more people moving. So I think that's a challenging problem. As soon as we announce something like that, some people could take advantage. Thanks for the clarification. Okay, thanks.
Great. Thanks, councilmember. Okay, we have a motion. I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Tony. Thank you. Okay, we're on to 5.2, Air Service Support Program for Spirit Airlines. Thank you. Let's go to public comment.
I have no hands. Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Tony. All right, we're moving along. Item 7.1, City Initiatives Roadmap Digital Equity and Empowerment Programs Status Report, and we do have a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jill Born, City Librarian, and I'm here today with Abby Schul from the Information Technology Department, and Ann Grabowski, Division Manager at the library and overseeing our digital equity initiative. So as we get going, I wanted to point out that while the City of San Jose has already identified the growing digital divide and the importance of digital inclusion for our residents, the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, among many impacts, obviously, immediately both highlighted and exacerbated the local digital divide and the related deep inequities in our communities. Through our work through the pandemic and continuing as a city roadmap priority, including working closely with our residents, we have focused our work on addressing three critical barriers to digital inclusion and equity. A lack of infrastructure and investment, meaning the absence or lack of fiber or a low cell signal, something like that. Connectivity plans that are unaffordable or low value for the money. And fear in our residents, whether it's privacy or online safety or a lack of understanding of the value of being connected. A lack of digital literacy has driven a resistance to adoption. With this understanding and with city council's support, we have developed and implemented a number of programs and initiatives that address these three primary barriers and by also leveraging both public and private infrastructure and assets. So today, just to make it clear, we are hoping to accomplish a couple of related objectives. First, we have an update on the broader digital equity and empowerment roadmap priority item that was referred from Neighborhood Services and Education Committee back in December of 2022. But we also have a recommended action to transfer the fiscal management of the Digital Inclusion Fund Program to the San Jose Public Library Foundation and give authority to initiate the next round of granting processes. Sorry? Okay. So backing up first to the broader digital inclusion, equity, and empowerment initiatives, we have relied heavily on extensive community and partnership engagement. From the very beginning, we cultivated and have been fortunate to have so many dedicated partners. This slide is packed with the logos of many of them. I believe some of you may remember that in an earlier presentation, we actually had two slides that were just as packed. So this only shows a portion of those meanings. So this only shows a portion of those meaningful partnerships. For example, while we worked with AT&amp;T to implement a mass-scale hotspot program, we have also forged and maintained ongoing partnerships with many, many entities, including Comcast and Verizon, just about every school district, and so on. And so meaningful, productive partnerships are and will continue to be a hallmark of this essential work.
I'm Ann Grabowski, Division Manager of Digital Equity with the San Jose Public Library. In addition to being focused on partnerships and our community, the second core principle of the digital equity program has been ensuring a focus on equity. What you see on the screen is a snapshot of our digital equity priority index, which calculates the prevalence of households with lower incomes and households without broadband by census tract. Since 2020, we have been deeply focused on aligning resources with areas of greatest need while ensuring that all residents in San Jose, regardless of where they live, can still access resources through their local library. This work has evolved significantly since 2020. Some of you might remember an earlier version of the map with different colors and different indicators. And we'll continue to manage this data in a way that most accurately reflects the community need for digital access going forward. The digital equity work plan is in full swing this year. With over 10,000 hotspots and computing devices available to residents at San Jose Public Library branches, both collections are in extremely high use, with average wait times for holds placed on items spanning three to five weeks on occasion. Routinely, our checkout rates are at 98% or above. Today, we are celebrating that our seventh community Wi-Fi network in the Mount Pleasant attendance area opened for use yesterday, a whole week ahead of when I thought it was going to. The program now offers free Wi-Fi in low and moderate income neighborhoods within the boundaries of Eastside Union High School District. In addition, we've added community Wi-Fi as an SJ311 service, are working to update the program assessment and evaluation, and are diligently seeking grant funding from federal broadband infrastructure funds that are in the process of being released. Focusing in on community Wi-Fi. Most of you know that community Wi-Fi is a free neighborhood Wi-Fi service that is offered in partnership with Eastside Union High School District. As I noted, we opened the Mount Pleasant network yesterday. The Silver Creek network is planned to open within the next month, and that will complete the eight builds that we set out to accomplish in the first iteration of this program. As networks open to the public, our award-winning library marketing team sends postcards to each address within the network area, which alerts the resident to the new network, its name, that it's a trusted network, and how to give feedback on the quality of the signal strength. And those materials are made available, of course, in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. Combined, these networks are built in areas where approximately 187,000 residents live and are intentionally concentrated in areas with a high density of K through 12 students and lower-income households. We've recently been awarded a $500,000 grant from the California Public Utilities Commission, which will fund a technical study of the infrastructure and equipment changes necessary to increase the speed available on community Wi-Fi to 100x100 megabits per second, which is a significant improvement over what's available now in San Jose and anywhere else in the nation. As you can see from this slide, the library's collection of devices is substantial. All of these devices are available free of charge to our residents through our 25 library locations at any time that the library is open. All of these devices were acquired and made available through our emergency efforts during the COVID-19 response, which allowed the city to wisely use several one-time sources of funding to purchase these devices and pay for the ongoing monthly data plans for hotspots and connected Chromebooks. It's important to note that as these one-time funds are exhausted, the city will be in a position to make budget decisions about what level of device access we can continue to provide to our residents as we balance many needs and priorities. So to lessen reliance on this program, in the next fiscal year, our team will be expanding our focus on supporting enrollments to the Affordable Connectivity Program, which is a federally subsidized internet program that allows families to have a high-quality, free-order, low-cost internet subscription of their own. Now I'll hand it off to Abby Scholl, the city's broadband officer in the Information Technology Department.
Thank you, Ann. I'm Abby Scholl, broadband officer in the Information Technology Department. In 2019, the city began the Digital Inclusion Grant Program with the goal to close the digital divide in San Jose by enabling community-based organizations to connect at least 50,000 unconnected residents with affordable, high-speed internet access, an appropriate device, and the digital literacy skills needed to participate in the digital economy and improve their quality of life. The annual grant program is 100% funded through non-taxpayer revenue from small cell usage fees and fundraising, which goes into the city's Digital Inclusion Fund. The small cell fees are paid annually by telecommunications companies for each city-owned streetlight pole that hosts their 4G and 5G antennas that improve wireless service across the city. Since 2020, the small cell and fundraising revenue has been declining. In 2019, the 10-year revenue goal and expectation for small cell and fundraising was $32 million. Today, due to technology and market changes, the expectation is $14.5 million, which is a 55% decrease from the 2019 goal. Considering the reduced revenue, $500,000 is now the funding anticipated for each grant round instead of the $1 million originally expected in 2019. The grant program is now in its third round of implementation. The fourth round will take place over the fiscal year 2023, 2024. The program has achieved remarkable results for unconnected residents in its first three years. Through our partnership with the California Emerging Technology Fund, CETF, the city was able to formulate and launch a unique grant program that engaged community leaders and organizations, leveraged our collective expertise and resources, and resulted in nearly 5,000 household adoptions to date through the award of over 2.7 million in digital inclusion grants. In addition, at the height of the pandemic, over 1.3 million in COVID-19-specific donations enabled special grants to schools, which led to the distribution of over 4,000 devices to students for distance learning. Our entire city team is deeply appreciative of the tremendous work that has been accomplished thanks to the leadership and focus that CETF has incubated in San Jose. And now I'll turn it back to Jill.
So to summarize the rationale and thinking behind staff's recommendations for the proposed action today, recognizing the changes and evolving nature of the technology on which the Digital Inclusion Fund was originally based, as well as the impacts resulting from the pandemic, the city is tracking a reduced level of revenue in the Digital Inclusion Fund that was originally projected. We also recognize that there will continue to be shifts in this whole technology ecosystem, and our intent is to capitalize on potentially available funds and opportunities looking forward. But that said, the recommended change in program administration to the San Jose Public Library Foundation will allow us for greater immediate sustainability of the Digital Inclusion Fund, preserving funding for future grant rounds. It will allow for alignment with the city council's policy 0.30, the education and digital literacy strategy, and alignment with our digital literacy quality standards. And it's important to point out that we will be leveraging the staffing and operational capabilities of the library and citywide digital equity team and initiatives, I'm sorry, through the initiatives that we have built in the last couple of years. So taking on the administration of the Digital Inclusion Fund program will actually align well with the planned digital equity and empowerment work plan for the next year. To advance the priority of affordability of internet access for residents, we plan to lean heavily into increasing household signups for the ACP, or Affordable Connectivity Program, that provides fully subsidized access, and to continue to operate the eight community Wi-Fi networks in partnership with Eastside Union High School District, identifying any improvements and optimizing their performance. In addition to internet access, we continue to provide our device lending programs, both computing devices and a collection of hotspots for public use. And to increase adoption, we will be implementing the DIF program, the Digital Inclusion Fund program, through Round Four Grants and expanding our digital skill-building workshops and resources with eight new modules. And our modules are available in English and Spanish. And very importantly, we will finalize the revised needs assessment and program evaluation that will inform our future work. So while we continue to seek any and all potential partnerships and funding options, both local, state, and also federal. And with that concept in mind, we are partnering with the Santa Clara County Office of Education and the County of Santa Clara to host an upcoming state digital equity plan regional meeting, which is on Friday, so save the date. It's on Cinco de Mayo. As they develop and finalize their own state digital equity plan, the state is holding regional meetings with the goal of identifying challenges and strategies to overcome the digital divide in Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. So we will be sending out more information about this as soon as possible. And before we wrap up, I did want to acknowledge the incredible and truly collaborative, cross-departmental nature of these broader city digital equity and inclusion efforts, which would never be successful without the support of our leaders and colleagues in the Department of Transportation, in Housing, Public Works, our partner in crime, the Information Technology Department, and certainly the library team. The team members listed here have met and been engaged consistently over the past few years, which the core team is embold. And I wish they could all be here to get a big round of applause for their work, but I do want to applaud the two leaders next to me, Ann Grabowski and Abby Scholl, for their steadfast strength and talents, leading this work on a day-to-day basis, and that they refuse to put their names up on the slide, but we need to acknowledge them anyway. So thank you, guys. And then finally, we absolutely need to celebrate our partners from CETF for their work in launching and incubating a strong and inclusive program in San Jose, Sunny McPeak and Charlene Tatis. Sunny couldn't be here today, and I think Charlene was going to, but I don't see her here. But we want to offer them our sincere thanks and appreciation for their partnership and accomplishments on behalf of the residents and all the partner agencies. And actually, we'll continue to be joined in our work with CETF together to close the digital divide. They are actually helping coordinate that state meeting that I just told you about, so we're working closely with them, and also working at the state and federal levels on advocacy. And so with that, that concludes our report, and we are happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jill. You know, I really want to echo the thanks. This is transformative work. When we think about public infrastructure, broadband may not be as obvious and physical as roads and bridges and sewers and streetlights, but is just as important. It's, I think, really, in this day and age, nearly impossible to achieve one's full potential and have upward mobility without access to broadband internet, whether it's for learning, accessing healthcare, accessing jobs, doing one's job. It's just so foundational that this is just really important work, and I'm proud of all of the impact that our city has had. Want to echo the thanks to CETF and Sunny and Charlene for their partnership, everybody across many departments, including my predecessor, Mayor Licardo, and his team, I know, played a big role in launching the Digital Inclusion Fund and making a lot of this work possible. And of course, all the community-based organizations that have been on the front lines of actually signing people up and training them and helping them really take full advantage of broadband and the devices. I know there's been a lot of learning over the last couple of rounds, and I appreciate all the community-based orgs that have done that great work in partnership with the city. So why don't we go to public comment first, and then we'll see if my colleagues want to chime in.
Matthew, followed by Blair. And then I have an, I also have an in-person speaker I'll go to after Matthew. Don? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Man, council members and staff. My name is Matthew Tinsley, and I am the Director of the Strong Start Initiative at the Santa Clara County Office of Education. On behalf of County Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mary Ann Dewan, we would like to thank the city for the work of the Digital Equity and Empowerment Program to reduce the impact of the digital divide on children's academic outcomes. Through the challenges of the pandemic, thousands of children and their families in the most impacted parts of San Jose were able to continue their education thanks to the partnership between the city, SCCOE, and our school districts. As the program transitions, we look forward to strengthening and expanding our partnership, beginning with the state digital equity plan meeting early next month. Thank you.
Don, followed by Blair.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Don Koppen, I'm the CEO of the San Jose Public Library Foundation. Thank you. And I want to say thank you again for your continued support of our award-winning library and your commitment to improving digital equity for the whole city. As you know, access to high-speed internet, computing devices, and the knowledge of how to use them are essential components for economic and educational empowerment, and they are also in close alignment with your goals for this coming year. The Digital Inclusion Grant Program is an important step in the city's effort to close the digital divide by 2029. We acknowledge and are so grateful for the California Emerging Technology Fund for their role incubating the Digital Inclusion Grant Program. Their work with the advisory committee to set up the initial grant cycles resulted, as you saw, in the digital inclusion of thousands of households. I would be proud for the San Jose Public Library Foundation to continue this critical work alongside the many community-based organizations in the digital inclusion community of practice. The Library Foundation successfully manages other city funds, as you may be aware. Specifically, we administer the citywide San Jose Learns program and Tutoring Matters, both competitive grant programs for TK through 12th grade, using the same kind of management framework as is recommended in this action. In addition, the Library Foundation has raised significant resources for the broader San Jose Access and Coding 5K programs as part of our support of the city's digital, sorry, education and digital literacy strategy. So for these reasons and others, the San Jose Public Library Foundation stands ready and able to manage the Digital Inclusion Grant Program, and I look forward to our continued partnership on this important work to expand digital inclusion and equity throughout the city. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Blair, followed by Paul.
Hi, William Beekman here. Thanks a lot for this report from Jill Bourne. It's been weeks in the making, and I've been really interested how this can be the introduction to our technology issues for our new council and mayor. So thanks a lot for it. It sounds like you're pulling back a bit, and that's kind of nice to hear. You're going to wait a couple of years to rev up grant funding ideas in the future again. I think in this meantime, I think you probably have implemented a lot of 5G and broadband installation around local neighborhoods in the past few years in this age of COVID that has really helped the process and that's made a lot of people also really uncomfortable. And I think it's that wasn't named in Jill Bourne's directive about, you know, the importance of gains that there can be in the digital equity process. I mean, there's a good set of lists that we have to talk about the broadband installation issues that are part of the digital equity package. That, you know, on my end, it's been such a, people have been so hopeful about what the future of digital, bridging the digital divide can be about, that the fact that COVID helped bring in, usher in, all this new technology has made people really uncomfortable. And I keep trying to offer, and this can now maybe be a time to offer, we can really practice the ideas of accountability with how we play, how the placement of broadband tech actually works in a community. If we make sure that installers have a really good notification process to community persons, that's an awesome, good step that they don't always learn to follow, that we need to teach them, and they need to know, and let's do those sort of things well in this broadband future. Thank you.
Paul, followed by Vi.
Paul Soto from the horseshoe. What Blair was saying was, was an excellent presentation on how poverty is used against the very people that are experiencing it in order to fortify the coffers of industries that are being exploited. that are willing to exploit that poverty in order to install these types of technologies in those areas. And that's something that the council has a responsibility to protect the citizens from. We're already experiencing poverty. We don't, we don't, how much more vulnerable can you be in this city than to be experiencing the consequences and the symptoms of generational poverty? Because that's what this is. Look at those census tracts. This is generational. This isn't just, oh, well, just these people are experiencing this because they're low income. No. What we're looking at is the generational symptom of poverty that was created by policies generations ago. My marker is 1939 of the redlining map. That's the marker. And this is another point, is the fact that these programs were created out of COVID money, again, just exploiting poverty there. What happened is you funded it with one-time funds, and you didn't institutionalize racial equity. See, when you institutionalize racial equity, you use that metric and you compare it, and if there's another program going on in District 6, then what you do is say, no, you pull that money because the racial equity principle applies, and you serve the community that needs it the most at the expense of the ones that have already been collected. That's what you do. That is the institutionalization of racial equity.
Vi.
Good afternoon, Mayors and Councilmember. I'm here on behalf of the Silicon Valley Education Foundation. My name is Vien Nguyen, and I'm the Director of the Program School to Home, which aim to bridge the achievement gap in the digital divide for our low-income middle school across California. And at SBEF, we value the effective use of technology and meaningful parent engagement to help our students succeed. SBEF is also the convening lead of the Eastside Alliance, which consists of seven elementary school district leading into the Eastside Union High School districts. So we care deeply about the digital divide. And we are also one of the grantees for Round 3, so shout out to the San Jose Digital Inclusion Partnership led by CETF. Based on the recommendation today, I would like to see a transparent transition from CETF to the San Jose Public Library Foundations in terms of financial funding streams and the grant processes. As we know, it is very difficult and costly to get adoptions per household, and it is currently un- equitable of funding for school districts already. So it is very crucial for us to see how funding is going straight to where it is needed the most. In addition, I recommend considering a potential of a diverse group of pro bono advisors beyond just the foundation. This group could be leveraged by the community to promote ACB enrollment across the region as it become a sustainable priority for the city, and they can act as a steering committee, always placing the digital divide at the forefront of the city issues. Last but not least, I would like to thank Vice Mayor Rose Marie Camay, who will be attending our third annual School to Home Leadership Academy next week, on Wednesday, to share with us more on our insight to the digital navigators locally. Thank you.
Back to council.
Great. Thanks, Tony. Okay. Looks like pretty much the whole council wants to comment. This is obviously a popular item. I'll just remind my colleagues, if they can, encourage them to be focused on questions and concise remarks. We're going to start with Councilor Cohen.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. As you know, I'm very interested in this topic, and I just want to say, first of all, it's something that we, as a city of San Jose, should be really proud of. This initiative that we stood up and have completed across a large swath of the city is incredibly, is an incredible model for other cities and for what we should do for our residents. It's also a model of what partnerships can do, all the partnerships with all the different school districts and agencies. It's a, it was a big undertaking, and I want to thank you for that. Now I'm going to ask the question, I'm a broken record on this, so you'll know. I ask this question a lot. One of the, first of all, I was part of the Digital Equity Group as a school board member that was pushing for this to happen in the city, so I'm really grateful for that. I was also on the school board in Berriessa when we were the first, I think, one of the first school districts to sign on as a partner on this project. And I just want to use the opportunity, since we're here, to remind that Berriessa School District was an early partner, but really doesn't have any of that program extending to that part of the city. So even though there are parts of the district, there's a very small sliver that has access to this Wi-Fi at the north part of Independence. Only 2/3 of the Independence High School attendance area now has access. And I guess my question is, we talk about the project, the installation's all being complete. Are we still potentially pursuing extending north into other parts of Independence and attendance area?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. The answer is yes. We don't have immediate timelines or plans. When we built Independence, we actually designed the entire attendance area, which is not how we typically manage our consultants' time, but it worked out for us because we know exactly where the rest of that network should go. We know that that's 800 access points. We have a little bit shy of 400 active access points in the attendance area now, and so we've got, you know, a little over halfway to build out the entire residential attendance area. We also know that, based on where that network is outlaid, we don't qualify for CDBG funding to be used in those areas because they are not low-to-moderate income census tracts. So we're actively seeking and digesting the federal regulations around broadband dollars to understand what other money we could use to build out that attendance area, and we'll be reconvening with Eastside Union High School District in the near future to understand what their interest is in building out that attendance area and using their funding.
So in the, I know there's some parts of the southwest portion of that, of that district, of Berriessa District, and also the Orchard District, that do have some of these low-income tracts. So I guess I'm not, we should talk about, you know, where we can qualify. I actually am more interested in the Orchard School District than the Berriessa portion. As much as I'm interested in Berriessa, I know that it's less of need, but the Orchard School District is a district that should qualify for this assistance and has some areas of higher need. So I, there's some higher-density areas that are now part of District 3 and that are, you know, near McKay and Oakland Road, and also the Mobile Home Park north of the school that I think clearly would be benefiting from this. So my follow-up question is about mobile home parks. We've had a, has there been an issue, there's been an issue, right, with installation in mobile home parks? Have we begun to explore how we might resolve that?
We are exploring how we might resolve that. The issue is that the city doesn't own any streetlight poles inside the mobile home park that can, can be used to manage the network in the park or bring the network into the park from city-owned fiber. So the answer is that, yes, we are exploring it. We understand there's some new, also more expensive, technologies that have a longer length of signal that could be used to penetrate portions of the park, but we want to work individually with each mobile home park to understand the implications for that mobile home park and if there are any unintended consequences for the residents in how their space fees might change or how that park owner might view that service differently. And so we need to wade slowly and carefully into that, but we are addressing it.
Okay. Thank you. And reach out to our office if you want to talk about, for example, Casa de Lago, which I think is the second or third-largest mobile home park in the city of San Jose. It's just north of Orchard School. I think they would benefit, let us know if we can help with that outreach and communication with that mobile home park. And I also just want to also thank the Silicon Valley, the San Jose Library Foundation, the partnership, leadership, and the willingness to take on this role. I think it's going to be a great partnership. So that's, those are my comments and questions.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jill, and Abby, for all your great work and support of our students and our educational, education partners. This is an exciting recommendation, as it will programmatically align a lot of our moving pieces to ensure cost-saving that will in turn benefit our students and our community overall. We know that the San Jose Public Library Foundation does excellent work. I was happy to meet with them earlier this, late last month, so it's good to know that their capacity and reach will grow because of this new change. I'm also excited to know that the Mount Pleasant build-out will be close to being complete, turning on, I think, in about a week or two weeks. That community's rarely where, really where I got my start in organizing as a trustee, and I still just live down the street, so really grateful for your work in that area. In short, I'm just really grateful for this work, for this project that I know is prioritizing equity and bringing connectivity to families who have been disconnected for, from resources for generations. You know, this is life-changing for our students on the east side to have access to reliable and strong Wi-Fi, and I think this is part of why we do what we do, is to make sure that we're bringing results for the, for the community. These are direct, tangible resources for our families, so I just thank you for your work. And with that, I'd like to move for approval of the recommendation.
Second.
I'm not sure who it was. Was it?
We'll give it to.
Thank you for, Councilor Torres.
Rochambeau.
Thank you. That was a lot of voices at once.
Thank you.
A lot of enthusiasm for this work. Great. Councilor Candelaus, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to express my appreciation for staff and, and, you know, the work of the digital inclusion team to expand our network. Councilmember Ortiz is just leaving, but yesterday, the Mount Pleasant neighborhood, which I share a portion of, was up and running, so this, I know this is going to be huge for a portion of my district and for the residents, like in the Furnish Park neighborhood in Mount Pleasant, so I thank the staff for that, and I look forward to seeing Silver Creek open up and, and making sure that the students and families who live in the area now have access to internet, which is, is not a luxury, it's a necessity now. So, thank you. I just wanted to express my appreciation.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Batra. Sorry, looks like you stepped out. Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. I too want to extend my thanks to Jill and your staff and everyone who works on this. I know it's a, it's a huge effort. One of the things that I, that I do want to point out, just following on Councilmember Cohen's notes in terms of the areas that, even though it says "complete," we're not finished. So, you know, I mean, I hope that we continue working with Eastside Union High School District to be able to bring it, you know, forward to many communities, because at the end of the day, Councilmember Candelaus just mentioned how, how necessary it is to have connectivity. And, you know, sometimes you're in sort of those positions where even though you may not qualify, you know, you're barely making it, you know, and you have to make choices between, oh, I'm going to buy a little bit more food, or I have to pay the rent, or what have you. So I, I think that there are, there's that sort of middle that sometimes don't have the extra money to be able to afford connectivity, and they just go without, right? So I recognize that, you know, there are many of those communities that, you know, have to make hard choices. And so I hope that you continue working with Eastside to be able to bring it to as many areas as possible. I get that, you know, they don't qualify for a CDBG, but I think that, I know that you've been very good about grants, so congratulations on that. And I think that, you know, continuing that, that strong partnership is what we're going to need to be able to broaden. So even though it says "complete," I know we're not finished, but thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Batra, we'll go back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Six years ago, 2016, is when I was here as an encore fellow. This was one of the key projects. We kicked it off with Mayors and City Managers Departments together. Dolan Beckel, Shereen Santrasham, and I were on the project. I'm glad to see that that project was well-conceived and well-done by now. So I give a lot of compliments to all the people who continue to work on this thing and made this a reality. And now with the adoption of this internet in about 5,000 homes, internet is no longer a luxury item. It's almost like, if we go back in years, we used to consider phones as an essential service, and people were given the equipment and the cheap lines. Those who couldn't afford the cheap lines even, they were given the lines free, and that was because it was considered an essential service. Today, internet access with proper device and proper speed is the same thing. It is an essential service, which everybody needs it and cannot live without it. So I'm glad that the city of San Jose showed leadership in doing this project, and you have made it a, probably a model example for others to follow. I do have some questions for clarification. Number one, you showed 4,851 adoptions. What's your target for the next year? Do you have yearly targets to get to somewhere?
That is a good question, and perhaps that's something we can look at. What we have is each round, the grantees propose the number of adoptions that they will reach at the end of the round, and I believe we have approximately 2,000 additional household adoptions in play right now in Round 3. Is that correct? So when Round 3 concludes, that will be another 2,000 households. And so, but we haven't set it as an absolute goal per, per round, because it is based on so many other factors, based on what the different providers, the applicant grantees, what they propose that they are able to reach during the round.
All right. So one of the things which I was looking, you have an impressive list of partners, okay? Page was overflowing, and you couldn't accommodate some other names, okay? I do have a question about it. These number of organizations, somebody with, I've seen small grants to each one of them. Help me understand how having this many organizations helps build up the thing faster? Or does it, having some very large organization with a lot of background and expertise in this thing, because this is not the core forte of many of the names I've seen?
Right. So, and I think that we may have confused things a bit with the presentation because this, this item is both a reflection of the update that we did for the Neighborhood Services Committee back in December of 2022, and it's information about the Digital Inclusion Fund. So the logos on the screen and the tens and tons of partners, they've actually been involved with us in myriad of ways from, they haven't all been grantees. They have been involved with us in terms of partnering around outreach, around identifying, you know, learners to work in our programs, and also contributing to the program. So we have had a variety of different types of partners. There's a list in the packet that has all of the grantees from the three rounds, and what you'll see is that the first year, there was an attempt to do more of a broad spread of funding to allow different types of grantees who may have a specific connection to an underserved community to potentially do this work, and that over the course of the three rounds, you'll see that some of those organizations dropped out, but some organizations, excuse me, were very successful and actually have continued throughout the program and have, have added more and more adoptions because they had the infrastructure, they were able to, you know, successfully build this into their work. So that's the, I'm not sure what page it is, but it's Attachment, it's cut off on mine. It's Attachment A to the supplemental memorandum.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that help answer your question?
Yes, it does, because, you know, normally we have, we talk about the volume gives you benefit and the, a lot of expertise replicated gives you advantages in terms of being able to do things more, more and more quickly. So that's why I was trying to go is spreading it around so many. Is it really helping us? Maybe it does, because you connect with more people, but, but I appreciate that answer. So I got one question on the devices. It shows that you have 11,000 devices available, and you checked them out. Don't we give these devices permanently to these people? Because you can't take it away, not a library book where you keep it for a week and bring it back. for a week and bring it back. Because this is something you're going to need it for always, forever, till a better one becomes available.
Right. It's again, a good question, because there's two separate programs. One program that we implemented through council direction during the pandemic was to distribute devices widely through our school partners at first. And then in the second year, many of those devices came back to the city based on what the school needed, and they became a circulating collection through the library system. That is separate from the, in many cases, the Digital Inclusion Fund program awardees and the grantees' adoptions that they're achieving. In many, I think in most cases, those folks are able to get a device that they then keep. So it's, they're two different programs, yeah.
Okay. All right. So those 11,000 actually supplement additional work. Okay, so last question. Whoever gets connected on this internet through the digital inclusion, are they assured that they will continue to be able to either keep this low-price thing, or that they have themselves will be able to afford it, or you will continue to pay for them through these programs?
That is also a great question, and one of the things that we're looking at through the assessment of the program long-term, is that we recognize that being able to be connected long-term is the goal, and that even being able to check out a hotspot from a library is not a sustainable option. So we're looking at programs that exist now, like the Affordable Connectivity Program, but working at the state and even federal level to try to make sure that there are other programs that can replace that program once it goes away. So I think that is something that we will bring back to council, I'm sure, as policy recommendations when we complete the assessment, is that long-term connectivity options for our resident have to be one of our considerations. Otherwise, the city will always be responsible for funding the connection for many residents who can't afford it.
Right. Thank you. Excellent work. Keep going. Keep going stronger.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jill, Abigail, and Anne, and the San Jose Public Library Foundation for serving the underserved children and the elderly, especially during the pandemic. When our children and elderly, the elderly, only connection to the world is through internet, especially our children, to connect to their teacher, and able to continue with their courses. And this is what the true equity, digital equity empowerment. And I just want to say, I am grateful, and I'm sure that our citizen are grateful for your leadership, and all of your librarians, and all the workers that support our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, I think we covered all of the comments and questions. We have a motion. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Tony. Great. Okay, we are on to, thank you. Thanks again for all the great work. We are on to item 10-2. So we're on to land use items, but we're going to take item 10.2 first, which is the annual performance review of our general plan. And we do have a short staff presentation.
Hello, everyone. Michael Brio, Deputy Director of Citywide Planning. I'm joined by Chris Burton, our director, and Robert Manford, the deputy or other deputy director in the department, as well as Laura Maurer, who's a planner, who is the project manager on what I'm about to present this evening, or this afternoon. It's not evening yet. So the annual review is, I know for many of you, this is going to be a new experience, but it is, once a year, we actually, we do sort of a report card on the general plan in terms of how we are achieving the general plan's goals and strategies to ultimately achieve the vision that the community and the council has included in this general plan. So that's what we're doing tonight. The actual report is organized around the 12 major strategies of the general plan, which you see before you here. The annual report actually itself is number 12, the periodic major review. I'm not going to go through all of these tonight. They're in the report. I'm just going to touch upon some of the key ones that I thought would be of interest to the council. So one of the major strategies is focusing growth into identified growth areas. This was done, one, to sort of promote infill development on transit, and also, quite frankly, as a way to preserve the existing established single-family neighborhoods that exist, and also to achieve the goal of fiscal sustainability for the city. So the growth areas include old-standing areas like downtown, of course, and North San Jose, new and old Eden Vale down in, I think it's District Two still, the Monterey Business Corridor. It also includes many of our specific plans that were done in the early 90s and mid-1990s. Many of those are close to being completed, or are moving towards completion. And then, more recently, it includes our 64 urban villages. So I think the big takeaway from this is since adoption of the general plan in 2011, the vast majority of our commercial, industrial, residential growth has occurred in these growth areas. Eighty-three percent of the residential development, eighty-six percent of the commercial development, eighty-one percent of the industrial development has occurred in these growth areas. So this isn't necessarily tied to major, the focus growth, but I think it's really interesting to note. And that is, that line you see is the dotted line is projected population growth for San Jose through the year 2040. And up until about 2015, we were tracking on that line. And then the population started to level off. It was growing, albeit much slower, until about 2020, when the population dropped during COVID. So we're no longer a million people. We've dropped below that threshold. And I think as things, you know, things will come to a new normal. And being that it is California, I don't anticipate the whole state is going to continue to decline and fall into the ocean. But I think growth is probably going to be slower than we've seen historically in the past. I will note that we are the 10th largest city. However, I think, from what I can tell from projections of population growth in Austin, Texas, they probably passed us in 2022 to be the 10th largest city. So this ongoing, we won't get into this now, it's a longer conversation, but, you know, I think we need to think about what California Bay Area and San Jose looks like with much smaller growth. And I think we all know the reasons for this. Yes, COVID, people moved farther away. But it's also, I think, really a decline in birth rate, decline in immigration from around the world to this area, which will probably come, is starting to come back. But also, the high cost of living, and particularly housing, this area is driving people away. The other major strategy is the innovation and regional employment strategy. And the goal here is to become not just the bedroom for Silicon Valley, but a regional job center and a Bay Area job center, where we actually have more jobs than we have workers that live in the city. And the goal is, by the year 2040, to achieve a one-to-one ratio of 1.1 jobs for every employed worker or every worker that lives in San Jose. Our short-term goal, 2025, is to achieve a balance of one job for every worker that lives in San Jose. So this major strategy is about intensifying employment land on transit where it makes sense, in areas that are low on VMT and other areas, adding new employment lands. And yes, so as you can see, our employees, employment to, jobs to employed resident ratio really hasn't changed a lot. It's bounced around the low eights. We started in 2011 at 0.8 jobs for worker in San Jose, and we're now at 0.81. 2017 was the high point at 0.85. So we really have not moved the needle on this front. Looking at jobs overall, we were, if you look at the, again, the dotted grayish line was the sort of projections that in the general plan. And we were on track. I mean, we were a little bit below what we were hoping to achieve every year, but the trend line was parallel to the where we wanted to go. And of course, jobs started to level off in around 2017. And then we took a big hit in the pandemic, people moving away. But we are starting to come back again, as you can see. Just to kind of put this in the context of the South Bay and the Bay Area, you can see the jobs to employment ratio of some of the surrounding cities. We're obviously, you know, on the, below one, and all of the cities that you see here are above one. I don't think there's any cities around us that are below one. They're all one or above. And some of them are actually growing in this regard. So just kind of looking at what this means for commercial and development activity. So what we've generally been doing, you know, we've been generally growing a fair amount of commercial and industrial developments is the approval of the general plan. And that's good. What we've seen, though, of course, in the pandemic years, in the sort of the end, the middle of the pandemic, is those numbers really dropped off. That's not, of course, a surprise, as we see people more working remotely. The future of sort of office development, at least in the near term, is not strong. And it's sort of a question of when that will come back. And industrial development also is not as strong as it has been in the previous years prior to COVID. What we have been seeing, which is not on the slide, is an increase in tenant improvement. So what we're finding is people are actually investing and improving their existing buildings to make them attractive to tenants, as opposed to building new. Major strategy number five is the urban village strategy. So this is the strategy that achieves to create much more urban mixed-use development on our, on our commercial corridors, often on really high-quality transit, but generally always on transit. So creating more walkable communities where people can get, achieve many of their daily needs in a shorter distance than they currently can. So we have 14 urban village plans that have been approved since 2011. We have one stationary plan in progress of development. That's the Capital Station Area Plan, which is an urban village. And we have the update of the Five Wounds Urban Village Plans. Technically, that's four urban village plans, what we collectively call them Five Wounds. And we're going to be issuing the Alum Rock East Urban Village Plan, anticipating that this summer. The other thing to highlight is the Signature Project. And so the Signature Project is a, so the way the urban village strategy works is that commercial can always move forward in urban village, affordable housing has a pathway forward, but market-rate housing needs to have a council-approved urban village plan prior to it being able to move forward. The one exception to that is the Signature, a Signature Project, which has, meets selected criteria in the general plan. It can move forward. One of the criteria of note is it has to achieve at least its fair share of the planned commercial development. Thus far, we have one Signature Project that's been completed. It's the Spartan Student Housing Project that's just down the street on 10th, 11th, and Santa Clara, East Santa Clara. We have another, and let's see, where are we? I'm not seeing up here. We have another one that's, another two that are under construction. One is, it's Dick Center on South Bascom. And another one, which at least all the housing has been completed, the commercial has it, is on Capitol Corridor. And we have, let's see, let me just see. And we have three, overall, we've had three Signature Projects that were approved this year. And then in terms of affordable housing, two were approved, two affordable housing projects in urban villages were approved in fiscal year 2021, two were approved in fiscal year 2122. We have currently four more affordable housing projects pending. And of the approved projects, three are under construction. And then, so major strategy number six is really about creating streetscapes for people, moving away from an auto-centric city to a city where streetscapes are places where all people have opportunities for all people to get around by different modes. And it's much more an opportunity to create great places for the people of San Jose. So San Jose has done a lot in the recent years, the Department of Transportation, in terms of moving us towards the more multimodal general plan goals of getting people into different modes and facilitating those opportunities. So they've, a lot has been approved by council, and they're moving forward with implementation on many of these. So that includes the Better Bike Plan 2025, the Emerging Mobility Action Plan, the Transit First Policy, the multimodal transportation improvement plans, called MTIPs for short, in East San Jose, downtown, and West San Jose, the Complete Street Plans, and then US 101 interchange improvements. I will note, so what you do see on the right-hand side is our goals in terms of mode split. And we've seen, we definitely have seen some big changes as a result of COVID. I think one notable change is that the drive-alone share has gone down from 83% in 2008, down to 75%. Transit has also unfortunately dropped from 4% in 2008, and then 5% in 2019, down to around 2%. So, and a lot of that, I think, can be explained by COVID, people working at home. And as a result of COVID, I think you're seeing a lot more people walking. So walking share has gone from less than 2% up to 10%. So it's not all bad news. It's just changes resulting from people working much more at home under COVID. So major strategy number nine, which is the downtown, Destination Downtown, is to, is to, you know, create a much more thriving, vital urban center for all of Silicon Valley. Since 2011, almost 9,000 residential units have been entitled, and 18.8 million square feet of non-residential, generally office development, has been approved. Last year, 259 units were approved, residential units, and 5.5 million square feet of office were also entitled. And so the vacancy rate is still relatively high, higher than we want to, but it has dropped from 1.5 percentage points, from a 23.6% vacancy rate, down to 21% vacancy rate. And the good news in terms of activity, I know that there's not as many people on the street during the workday, but the events in downtown, the Jazz Festival, the Blues Festival, other festivals, movies in the park, the Levitt concerts, all that stuff has come back to downtown. And so we're seeing a lot more people enjoying downtown, particularly on the weekends. So housing is not a major strategy in the general plan, but it's woven in many of the strategies in the general plan. As you can see from this slide, we were, you know, tracking, close to tracking our projections on how much housing we needed to build to achieve 120,000 housing units that are planned in the general plan. However, in more recent years, even before COVID, our housing numbers have been dropping, largely due to the cost of construction relative to the rents in San Jose. Here's a slide showing you the, the construction annually by different housing types. So the green line is single-family, the orange line is ADUs, and the blue line is multifamily. And what we're seeing here is that single-family is largely not changing that much. It's flat, going down slightly. We're not building a lot of single-family anymore. We haven't really done that since the early 2000s. Accessory dwelling units, however, are the little engine that could. I mean, they're, they really are doing well. We've gone from 12 units in fiscal year 11, 12, to 540 units in 2122. So that's the bright little shining star. And multifamily development, as you can see, has, you know, had good, good years, really good years, and pretty good years until about 1920, prior to the pandemic, when, when basically the cost of development really put a damper on, on construction in San Jose. So this is just kind of, that's, that's sort of So this is just kind of, that's, that's sort of a summary of the overall annual review report. We generally give this before you hear privately initiated amendments, to sort of give you the context of how we're doing and implementing a general plan. And it's discuss some of its major goals and policies before you consider privately initiated amendments. We have once a year where we consider privately initiated amendments, and we present the annual review report to council. That's typically in the fall. This year, because the environmental review, we're not complete on our privately initiated amendments, it was pushed back until the spring of this year. But we do anticipate we'll have the 2023 annual review in the fall of this year, as is normal. So there's four of them on the count, on consideration tonight. Three of them are in consent. And then you have Granite Rock, which is a public hearing. And I will conclude with that and open up for questions and discussion.
Great. Thanks. Let's go to public comment.
Danny Garza?
Councilmember Peter Ortiz, appreciate it. I'm here basically dealing possibly with five and six. I was sent an email showing that Alum Rock Avenue is going to be added to Little Portugal, to that urban village. If that's incorrect, I could stop now. But, but if, if that is correct, then I'm here to defend our community. We have, we tried to get into the urban village issues years ago. We were denied. We were given, instead of a 250-page urban village plan that Little Portugal got, we got five, one-half pages. Since it was found that that was totally unacceptable, we became a foreign-based zoning area. That is not fair. Now to include us in the summertime in Little Portugal is unthinkable. They don't have the same issues we do, especially with pollution. They don't have the housing issues we do. I don't want to, I don't want to get too deep. You've all seen my emails already. I just, I just want protection and justice and equality in the East Valley. If you're going to do something in our area, then come to us. Don't go to the 501(c)(3)'s who represent a check. Come to the community where we live and talk to us. So I thank you for your time.
Blair, followed by Paul.
Hi, Blair Beefin here. Thanks for this item. As I tried to describe earlier, you know, city government-community process can be a little kooky sometimes, and things have a way to kind of come around, back around to where you started from. So things are put off. And I hope for consistency in the process to learn how to better do that. But actually, this item was at the beginning of our meeting, item 10.1, and I felt you skimped a bit on asking for public comment. And it was very nicely asked by Councilperson Torres if there was any additional public comment. Thank you for that. And you moved on past public comment for a pretty important item. But it's now back here at this time and allows me a public comment. So thank you. The process interesting, this is how we kind of work our process. There's issues of building that I hope, you know, we've had previous public meetings, recent council meetings about the good purposes of what different middle-income-level housing ideas can do for the future of how to talk about housing and growth in our future. That was mentioned very nicely today, again, by the city staff person, really how to, how, kind of a basic overview, how to view housing at this time. I just wanted to remind yourselves of that. And as general plan items tend to work towards, also work towards digital equity ideas, a real good luck from my previous comments today, how to really consider the concepts of civil rights and civil protection ideas that kids can learn as bridging the digital divide issues and open accountable practices and policies. That should be important, an important part of bridging the digital divide for our future. Good luck how we teach that to our children and build good community. Thank you.
Paul, followed by Catherine.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I heard him say, the dude that just gave this presentation, he said that housing, building housing was not a high priority for the 2040 plan. This is what he said. I didn't misinterpret what he said. That was his statement. Number two is that you're not explicit about the 400,000 people that you guys have planned to come here. Number three is that when you have any kind of a cell that grows and continues to grow and grow and grow, what it's called is a cancer. That's what it is. And cancer kills. It kills people. What we're looking at right now, at this particular time in our history, is genocide via euthetics. You guys need to study euthetics because it is the precursor to eugenics. What they're basically doing is they're creating a society that can only accommodate a certain type of person. Naturally, what that means is when you have that kind of growth, it will result in the cancer. The cancer will kill off people that can't, that there's no way that they can accommodate that system that's being created. We're looking at it right now. And we're acting like, no, it's really not happening. Human beings in a government wouldn't do this. I need to remind you. This is the same government that was built and predicated upon the decapitations of Native Americans. Peter Burnett, we had a school named after Peter Burnett. So if you think that genocide is not possible here in San Jose, you need to study your history.
Catherine?
Thanks very much. And I'm not quite sure if I followed everything the previous speaker was saying, but I think I agree with the gist of it. We are pushing out people who don't meet the profile of Santana Row residents, basically. And hearing the speaker say that Alum Rock is being lumped in with the Five Wounds District, even though their issues on the opposite side of the freeway are completely different. I don't know what San Jose thinks that's doing. And deprioritizing housing in the general plan, when everybody knows our biggest problem is housing and affordable housing. People cannot afford to live here. That's why our population is decreasing. People are either leaving, they're being displaced, or they can't afford to live here. Thank you very much.
Back to the council.
Great. Thanks, Tony. While we don't normally get into back and forth around public comments since Mr. Garza took the time to come down here and wait, I do just want to ask if staff, we may have to take it offline, just to be clear, but I'll just take the prerogative here to ask staff if there has been any change proposed for the Alum Rock Corridor, otherwise we'll, we'll follow up offline and get you some more information.
No, there's no change at all. I mean, we're not, there's, I've not even heard a discussion. We're not proposing to consolidate Five Wounds or Little Portugal with Alum Rock. I think maybe Danny's confused, but myself, some other staff, and VTA staff met with Chris Esparza and Jonathan Borca at the Mexican Heritage Plaza, and they were presenting their concept of a cultural district, which would, which would include a portion of Alum Rock and, and Little Portugal, all the way to the Five Wounds Church. But it's not part of our planning process, our urban village process.
Not a new urban village plan or changed to any of the urban villages currently?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we will make sure to follow up offline. Thanks for coming down, Mr. Garza. Absolutely. Okay. We're going to go to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just a little, a few questions in regards to a member of the community, Danny Garza, what mentioned, the Five Wounds Project. I know that there has been a overall community advisory group in regards to that project. Will there be community town halls for individuals who are not on that advisory group to be informed about it so that they could have input?
Well, I mean, there is not a formal advisory group for Five Wounds.
Oh, there isn't?
No. So there's, they're doing really deep outreach in that area. I think they're going door-to-door, business-to-business. There's virtual meetings, in-person community workshops. The next workshop is coming up, I think, on the 20th of April. But, so, yeah, but they're, yeah. So that's the approach.
Is there going to be town hall? I know that the 20th, right, that's for small businesses, I believe, which we've been doing outreach for. My office has been reaching out to businesses up and down, both Alum Rock and the Santa Clara Street Side. But will there be opportunity for neighborhood residents, neighborhood associations who live in the vicinity of that area to hear about the project and provide input?
Right. So there already has been, and there will continue to be opportunities for that.
Okay. Okay. So then must that happen before I was in office, then?
Correct.
Oh, okay then. All right. Would be great. We'll follow up online to make sure that we could have a District 5-directed discussion, because I know the majority of that project isn't in my district. I just want to make sure that the neighborhood leaders understand what's going on.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Thank you for that. Going to my other questions, I want to thank staff for your comprehensive report that you put together. While the city has advanced many of the general plan's goals, we are still recovering as a whole, especially East San Jose, and need to do, work hard towards advancing our city's economic growth, which we all know. I did want to echo the importance of the ask from Commissioner Baraccio for staff to provide some clarity on major strategy number 10 regarding parks, their level of service reduction in fiscal year 2022 to 2023, if it's possible to get a breakdown of data according to council districts in future reports. That'd be extremely important for me to know, just given that District 5 parks are rated the lowest here in the city of San Jose. Just want to see how that may impact the families in my district. It's important to see, you know, that data broken down, just to identify where resources need to be focused to improve overall quality of life. The general plan promotes access to the natural environment by building a world-class trail network and adding parks and other recreational amenities. I'm excited to hear that the Parks and Community Facilities Development, CIP, has increased by 66.3 million, as mentioned in page 46 of the, of the document, which with 62 miles of trails open to the public. Are there any plans to use this funding to emphasize trail safety?
Yeah, I can't, I don't know if there's anyone from Parks here, but we don't have an answer to that. So we have to follow up with Parks.
No worries. No worries. Thank you. And while the city has a 1.1 jobs per employed residence goal, we are currently at a, obviously, an 8.1 per employed residence. I don't know if you guys directly can answer this question, but do you know if there's a strategy to bridge this gap at the moment?
Well, Chris will want to jump in because he came from Economic Development, I'm sure. But, I mean, so, so yes, I mean, I think what we're, the Office of Economic Development is continuing to try to attract employers to this office, to the city, and I think really to ensure that those employers that are already here, frankly, grow here and they don't leave. From a planning perspective, just from a land use planning perspective, what we're focused on to a large degree is ensuring that we retain the employment lands that we have, and we have a policy and ordinance framework that makes them attractive to employers and developers that build commercial such that they would be enticed, you know, to build within San Jose. And in the case of industrial, we want to make sure that we're not introducing industrial into residential areas, which can have a real impact on the viability of industrial land. Now, that's not North San Jose as an industrial parks. That's unique. I'm talking about real industrial. So it's really about improving, enhancing the policy and ordinance framework that we have. And I'll let Chris talk about the things that Economic Development has been doing.
So I think Michael covered a lot of that. Councilmember, obviously, the Office of Economic Development is out there working directly with employers. And as noted, more of the employment growth we see in the city comes from existing employers that are expanding into that space rather than attracting kind of new employers. But really, the key from both our perspective and the Office of Economic Development is continuing to provide that opportunity and connecting the availability of land and buildings with those industry segments that have the opportunity to grow.
Thank you. I also noted in the plan that there's city-level employment data that is being provided by CEDD. Is there a way to disaggregate this sort of data to make sure that we're pushing for certain workforce development projects to meet the need of employment here?
Yeah. So I can say that the Office of Economic Development does do a lot of work with the data that's provided through the state. It's probably worth us doing a follow-up item just to kind of dive into that level of specificity and can connect those dots with you, either offline or potentially through CED or something.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Back to a planning question. Regarding the Planning Department's goal to advance outreach with an equity lens, which I noted earlier is really important, I wanted to see if there was an update with staff on our last meeting regarding providing notices in other languages, including Spanish and Vietnamese, and in regards to development. In the past, residents have called, letting us know that a lot of the resources weren't accessible to different, different languages that are being spoken.
So, Councilmember, yeah, it's definitely something that we're spending a lot of time on. As noted previously, we've added resources within the department around language access and equity specifically around our communications to residents as it relates to development. We're still working on how best to work with our notifications. And certainly, the postcards we send out en masse relative to development projects have been a point of contention in the past, and it's something that we're continuing to work on. Through the Five Wounds Projects, we've actually been trying out some new mail-out flyers. There was a piece that I think just went out, right, Michael, in five languages with much more targeted information that was intended to be more accessible to different parts of the community. Obviously, part of that assessment is understanding the cost differential and how we figure out those pieces, not just in the production, but also just in the mailing. We mail thousands of postcards a year. And so just, you know, there's an incremental cost associated with that. We need to make assumptions based on that.
Yeah. So my, so one of the things we are moving forward with, I think, is a recommendation that may have come from a staff person, I believe, from your office, Councilmember, and that is to put a QR code on the notices so that people can go to the website and see the information in Spanish, Vietnamese, or other languages. So that's something we are planning to implement if it hasn't been done already. That was, came from my team because they were sending out all these notices about rezoning properties per state law requirements.
No, I definitely appreciate that because as you can imagine, if you're a Spanish-speaking family or Vietnamese-speaking family, you see that some sort of message from the city can maybe figure out that there's going to be development, but you don't understand what it is. So it could cause some panic in our immigrant communities. And then finally, I'm happy to see that we're really focusing on development near transit areas. But, you know, I also have concern for families who already live in these areas, similar to Alum Rock and the Five Wounds Urban Village Plan. Can you talk a little bit, I know we've had several meetings in regards to this, Chris, but can you talk in regards to what sort of considerations we're putting into place in the Five Wounds Urban Village Plan for both renter displacement and a commercial displacement?
Yeah. So I can't speak on the details of, so the work is being done. So a huge component of a scope of work item within that planning process, which we have not done in any other planning process in the city to date, is hiring consultants specifically that have expertise in how to mitigate or address potential displacement of residents and businesses. So they are going to be developing some strategies to consider with the idea that what comes out of this planning process could have, the goal is it has applicability to consider something citywide throughout the city, not just in this urban village, but citywide. But I can't speak on the specific things that are being considered at this time. They're still under development. And one of the purposes of the April 20th workshop is to have a discussion and get feedback from the community on these.
Okay. Councilmember, I'm sorry if you want to wrap, we're at 10. I'm happy to circle back to you, but yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Council.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember, appreciate it. And did you want to move acceptance of the report, or do you want to wait on that?
Sure, I move acceptance of the report.
Great, thanks, Councilmember. Councilman Batra.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report, and I got a few questions. Number one, are we still approving single-family homes? Or because of the last change about that zoning changes and state saying that you need to have multiple, each single-family home can now have multiple units on it?
Yeah, I mean, we, so people, we are still permitting single-family homes, I think last year was 63 units, so it hovers between 63 and maybe 190 units a year or so. It's not a lot. I would say most of them are probably tear-down rebuilds, they're not, you know, we don't, we've, 51% of our land, I believe, is dedicated for single-family homes in the city, so it's a lot, and we're not really making that land anymore, so it's generally tear-down rebuilds. Yeah, now, there is communications hill, right? They have many, many phases of development, and so that would be probably often a bigger tranche of single-family that we would see in a year.
Okay, no, thank you. Are we backed up in ADUs approvals, or they're getting as quickly as they arrive?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, could you repeat that question?
Okay. Are we able to approve the ADUs as the requests come, or they are backlog, like a lot of your planning work is?
So, yeah, our A D U process is actually pulled out and separate and apart from the regular permit process, and is proceeding pretty much on track, so we have dedicated resources that support that program. Obviously, the quickest process is we have a number of pre-approved plans relative to A D Us that people can just pull out and work within the context of their site, there's still some work to be done on that, but we're moving those units through, you know, very quickly.
Okay. Now, we talk about that our population is declining because of our cost of living is one of the factors. Are we seeing the same thing in Cupertino and nearby, or it is we have the unique problem here?
So, I haven't seen it on a city-by-city level, but I will tell you, the population for the whole state of California and for the whole Bay Area has been declining, so San Jose is not unique in this regard.
Okay. And I've seen that San Francisco has got somewhere around 29% vacancy rates for their commercial space. Are we benefiting from any of that? Are there's people moving their offices to us, or can we do anything to attract those office work here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure Chris will want to jump in this one, too, but I think a lot, it's not that the office users are fleeing certain markets per se and going, building or are renting office space in another market. I think the issue is, you know, coming out of COVID or in COVID, we've gotten used to people working from home, or at least in a hybrid work environment, or sometimes fully remote. So, that's impacted the amount of demand for square footage. There are signs that some employers are pulling people back into the office full-time or at least three days a week, right? You hear about Apple and Salesforce, I think, is going to be doing the same, so I think things will change, but it, you know, at this point, it is a matter of like, well, they're fleeing San Francisco and they're going somewhere, let's bring them into San Jose.
Okay, okay. We're talking about the number of trips originating and ending, and because of the remote work, the number of people probably are not able to carpool as much as they were because of the person maybe going Monday, the other one goes Tuesday and all that. But I see with still number of people working from home, our commute hours, traffic, or the congestion is pretty high, and I don't know, you may have the numbers and measurements on that one. If people did start coming in more number of days back to work, I'm not sure if you'll be able to handle that in the commute patterns, because I see all the way, we're starting around near Morgan Hill on 85, it used to be a breeze in the morning, now it's a parking lot, okay? So, you have any comment on that one, what may things look like, or if there are things in place that we hope to make it better than a parking lot?
Yeah, Councilmember, certainly commute time, from a personal experience standpoint, is a leading indicator for health of the economy, so generally, it's a good thing the longer we wait in the commute. What I'll say is the numbers pre-pandemic, it was still sort of overarching that single-ruiter vehicles on the roads were the vast majority, and so as we see people come back into the office, it will likely return to that condition, while there's probably some impact to carpooling and commuting, you know, that's probably offset to some extent with the hybrid work schedule. So, it's likely it will return to that pre-pandemic condition as the economy improves and returns back to where it is. I don't know that we'll see a significant change in that pattern.
Yeah, I think there was an article in the Mercury about this recently, too, and one of the things that I've heard talked about is that, so, you know, yes, there are a lot of people working at home partially, sometimes fully, but what's happening is people are starting to go back in the office, and there's a huge body of the workforce that can't work remote. I think what's happening is that as people go back in, or have to go in and never could stay at home, is they're not taking transit like they used to. And so, they're driving, and a lot of the people that used to ride transit are now driving and not going back to transit yet. So, I think that's one of the challenges and why we're seeing the highways so congested when there are still a lot of people, at least in certain days of the week, that are working at home.
So, for building affordable homes under SB 35, people don't have to come to us as early as, or come to you as early as they used to come before, right? When they were thinking about one of those affordable projects, they probably came to you to check out if this area will work out, would it be proper zone or not? Now that the SB 35 does not require them to do that, or they have no need to do it, do you have any whispers signs if there are a lot of SB 35 projects about to emerge suddenly and surprise us with a lot of good news about having affordable homes?
Yeah, I mean, we've seen great success with SB 35. We actually, as staff, really are very, look favorably towards that state law, it's really streamlined the process. But keep in mind that our overall goal as planning staff is to create a policy or ordinance framework that if you are doing what the general plan wants, you have a clear path to go quickly forward. It's very different than the way things used to be, even when the general plan wanted you, there you had to go rezone the property, and so some of this is a result of the work we're doing on our own, and some of it's a result of state law changes, it's both. I don't know, I'm not, you know, we're continuing to see SB 35 projects, I'm not seeing like a tsunami coming of them. I think the biggest issue is for SB 35 is those projects, even though technically they can be mixed income, meaning market rate and affordable, market rate developers are, we have not seen interest in doing that. So, it's really 100% affordable projects, and I think as you become aware, there's a limited amount of money for all these projects. If there were more money, I think we would see more of them.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, and thanks for the great work. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Councilmember. I'm curious, as we bring forward our housing element, respond to much more aggressive Rina targets from the state. Just in the context of this reflection on our general plan, what we see as the leading strategies, obviously, there's a little bit of a bright spot around A D Us, I don't think that's going to get us to 62,000 units, there'd be open revolt if it did, but what do we see as the primary strategies that are going to help us meet our Rina targets in the years ahead?
That's a good question. So, I think some of them that come, and I didn't, I don't have a, didn't fully prep for this, but I would say one of the ones that we're talking about is figuring out a way, is there to take the streamlined benefits of SB 35 and apply it to market rate projects so they have a much more streamlined process? That's something we are looking at. The other thing I think you've heard talk about is there's some financial challenges to do this, to be honest, but see if we can do a more environmental preclearance in urban villages. I think the others, sort of, I said this before, the one typology of housing that, at least last we checked a year ago, was feasible is townhomes and small-scale, you know, condos or apartments, and that's a type of development that we don't have a lot of space for currently in the general plan, and I think we need to think about, is there an opportunity to allow that, but do it smartly? We don't want to start converting our employment land into townhomes for one reason, it doesn't actually end up with a lot of unit yield, and also, we have to be cautious and balance the other goals of the general plan, including our regional jobs goal and economic goals. But I think, are there some areas where the transition between urban villages and single-family areas, or on single-family lots or properties that are on arterios where we could start to think about allowing that typology? I don't think there's going to be a silver bullet, I think, I don't think there's one strategy that's going to move the needle significantly by itself, I think we're going to, we're having to look at like many tools in the toolbox to move the needle.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, and I won't drill down now, because I know there's a lot more to say on that, and didn't mean to blindside you with the question, but I do think it's a really critical one for us to ask as a city, and certainly also looking at staffing levels and planning and just kind of speed and consistency of our customer service, if you will, I think it's going to be really critical. Okay, not seeing any other hands, I didn't actually catch who offered the second on Councilmember Ortiz's motion, was that, that was Torres, sorry, that's twice today, I apologize. We got Councilmember Torres offering the second. I do see one hand up again, Councilmember Batra, go ahead.
I forgot to ask one question, I do, and when I read this motion today to accept the report, I had seen the Planning Commission wrote that there are four comments, are they being accepted as a part of this, or they are, when we say we accept the report, are we accepting that Planning Commission's comments will be included in there or not?
I think, I think they're really just more comments they wanted to pass those thoughts on to council, so, yeah, I don't, I don't know if you're, I don't know if you're technically accepting their comments to you, I'm not sure, I would defer to the attorney on that.
The wording I read here says that the Planning Commission voted 801, Casey being absent, to recommend that the city council accept the general plan annual performance review report and incorporate the following commissioner comments. So, to them, it looks like that they are, if we are accepting this thing, we are accepting that these points are made, because there are some, some actions they are asking to be taken, okay?
Yeah, so that, that sounds great, I, sounds, then you'd be accepting those, I think.
Okay, all right, that's good news, thank you very much, okay?
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, Tony, let's vote.
I just want to, I have one comment, I just want to acknowledge Laura Maurer, who's been with us only a year, her, and, so I don't know if you know this, we had a general plan team that was quite experienced, and in a matter of months, the whole team left the city, all four of them, and so we had to start from scratch, just want to acknowledge her and some of her teammates, Rena and Sanita Goschel, who had to reverse engineer a lot of things, including this report, because no one other than me was around who had done this kind of work before, so, thank you, Laura.
Thanks for noting that, Laura, thank you for stepping up, you and your colleagues. Michael, thanks for preserving the institutional knowledge, we appreciate it. Okay, and I did find the report extremely informative, I appreciate it, I think we have a lot to talk about looking forward as how we're going, as to how we're going to hit our big goals, but appreciate the annual report. Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Tony. We're on to land use consent, and I don't believe there's any presentation, we have a motion, there's a second, that was Councilmember Cohen, go to public comment.
Jill Borders.
Hi, first of all, I just wanted to let you know that I thought I had my hand up for the 10.2 item, and I'm just sick about not being able to say anything about it, but I will resist. On the consent item, I just wanted to throw out a mention, and one of them is that at 2267 Plummer Avenue, the home there, the residential home will be used by Presentation High School, the zoning changed, the, it will be changed so that I guess the robotics club will be able to meet in the home and submit administrative offices and so forth. And there was a letter on, in, grouped with that, a public comment and so forth regarding Presentation as, you know, how they are in the neighborhood and so forth, and I just wanted to let you know, I lived at 2266 Plummer for five years, and Presentation High School was the most amazing neighbor that I could have ever had. And so, I thought, you know, not often do we get a chance to speak to something that I have direct experience with, but as a neighbor, they actually had the young women come over, several young women come over from Presentation High School, and they were knocking on all the doors, so my doors was right across from this one, this one home, and offer our family tickets to go to every single production that Presentation put on. And so, I just thought, you know what, that, that went a long way, they were great neighbors, we really appreciated that, we went to every performance we could, and we were, it was a courtesy, and they said, we want to be good neighbors, so the people on this street, we have them come to these events free. Anyway, so I thought I'd let you know that, because I just love them, it made such a great impact on us, their, their good neighborly attitudes, and that's it, thank you.
Back to council.
Great, thank you. Okay, not seeing any hands, let's vote.
Can you repeat who made the motion in second?
It was Councilmember Cohen, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jimenez seconded by Councilmember Cohen, there we go, excuse me, Councilmember.
I'm sorry, I didn't jump in earlier, but that property is technically in District Nine, it's south of Coke, and it's District Nine, even though it says District Six. May, may the records show, stand that correction.
Thank you for setting the record straight.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you, Tony. Okay, we are on to regular land use item 10.3, plan development permit on real property at 120 Granite Rock Way, we have a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Chris Burton, Director of Planning Building Code Enforcement. Our last general plan action this evening is relative, as you mentioned, to the Granite Rock project. It's a project that has three components, a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from combined industrial commercial to heavy industrial, a planned development zoning, rezoning from currently an IPPD to an HI heavy industrial planned development zoning district, and then an associated planned development permit to provide additional clearance for modernization of the existing facility on the site. There's a considerable amount of site work considered under the project in its entirety, a lot of it, most, all of it, sorry, related to the current operations on the site that will effectively improve the condition and continue to modernize an existing business that's been in the district for a considerable amount of time. I'm not going to go too far into the detail. As noted, this is the general plan change from CIC to heavy industrial, which, again, just to note, is something we do very rarely to create new actual industrial lands throughout the city, so this is a unique opportunity. And as noted, the zoning will change as well to the associated, it's still going to remain a planned development zoning district that takes into account the unique nature of the site, but the underlying zoning will reflect that general plan with a heavy industrial underlying designation. So, as we review the project, obviously, we take into account consistency with the broader general plan and all the policies included within it, Title 20 of the municipal code, zoning ordinance, as well as our industrial design guidelines, city council policy on public outreach, and CEQA. Under CEQA, we've prepared a draft environmental report for the project, it circulated back in September of last year through November, it identified relevant mitigation measures for potential impacts related to biological, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, and hazardous, hazards and hazardous materials. The mitigation measures included in the monitoring report that's associated with the project. The mitigation measures included in the monitoring report that's associated with the project. We received public comment on the draft EIR and posted a first draft amendment to the EIR on the city's website just back in March 14th. Based on the comments received, no recirculation of the EIR was necessary. So finally, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution certifying the general plan amendment to heavy industri, sorry, certifying the environmental impact report, then adopting a resolution approving the general plan amendment to heavy industrial, approving the ordinance change to change the zoning district from IPPD to HI heavy industrial planned development zoning district, and then finally, adopting a resolution approving subject to conditions, a planned development permit. With that, staff's available for questions, and the applicant's representative, Eric Shanauer, is here to talk to the project.
Great, thanks, Eric. We'll hear from the applicant.
So much for canceling the 6:00 PM evening session. Anyhow, good, good evening, Mayor Mahan, members of the council. My name is Eric Shanauer. I represent Granite Rock, and I am joined today by Pat Mapelli from Granite Rock and Dina Marselli from HMH Engineers. We hope that you will approve the project as recommended by Councilmember Dwan in his memo, as well as the unanimous Planning Commission and the planning staff, all recommending approval. And, excuse me, one sec, the presentation isn't up.
We appear to still be on wage theft.
I'm hoping not to have a mandatory disqualification.
Try to avoid that.
I didn't work on Slavery Tower, I promise. Nothing to do with that project. Not my fault. While we're looking for the presentation, I'll start by thanking staff for all of their time. This project's been in the works over four years and had a very thorough and complicated environmental impact report that's before you. After waiting all this time, we hate to give up on the presentation. So if we can have one moment?
Yeah, no, no problem. We'll, we'll wait. I think staff is looking now.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
All right, we're resetting the clock.
There we go. Sorry about that. I used to like the old days, you know, there used to be a document camera here where I would just put hard copy papers. And it was broken two years before the pandemic, and here we are, three years into the pandemic, so five years, and the camera's still not fixed. So maybe someone could work on that. Anyhow, on the site is, on the screen is our existing site, and three things to note in this picture. Number one, the site is well buffered from any sensitive uses. We have industrial, parking lot, railroad, and major roadway surrounding the site, so no adjacent sensitive uses. The other thing is, you can't quite tell, but on the top of this screen is the main freight line into San Jose from the, from the south, which is key to serving the site. And then lastly, if you look, almost all the site is not paved at all today. This site has a long history of being, providing rail-served industry in, in San Jose, 141 years, in fact. Back in 1882, this was established as the San Jose Brick Company, and they were strategically located here to be on the rail line, to provide bricks to San Jose and the entire Bay Area, and especially San Francisco after the earthquake, to, to rebuild. Granite Rock acquired this site 52 years ago in 1971, and Granite Rock has been providing aggregate rock out of their quarry in Aromas, concrete, asphalt, and key construction materials for the whole Bay Area, and still, being rail-served is critical to the success of this site. The Granite Rock service to the community is significant. The materials, construction materials that come out of this facility have built some of the, the most significant facilities throughout San Jose and Silicon Valley. You can see a list here, from the Bariessa BART station to the new Science Building at San Jose State to Levi's Stadium. This is an exciting one, the Laurel Curve Wildlife Undercrossing that just opened up so animals can cross underneath 17. They provided the concrete and asphalt to that project. So it is a critical facility to meet our construction needs, not only these big projects, but when we build housing, when we build job space, when we build retail space, when we build Phase Two of the BART line, we need construction materials. This is what the new site will look like, similar to the existing site. The key difference is that the entire site will be paved now, and the materials will primarily move in an enclosed system of conveyor belts and silos to help reduce dust and air quality impacts. And the crosshatched area is the materials recycling. So this facility takes demolished asphalt and concrete, brings it in, and re-cycles it into new construction materials, which is essential to divert those materials away from our landfills. And really, the highlight of this project is significantly environmentally beneficial changes to the site. So expanding the railroad capacity from 25 cars to 70 means that we'll take hundreds of trucks off the road that now bring rock from Aromas up to San Jose. So those will not be causing traffic or having heavy trucks damage local streets. As I mentioned, the loading, moving of these materials will all now be in enclosed conveyor belt and silo systems, and that will reduce dust and other air quality contaminants. And the entire site now will be paved. So as I showed you before, almost none of it is. Now it will all be paved to help limit dust and also contain stormwater flows. There will be a modern concrete truck washout, and the benefit of that is that you can capture all of the contaminants from the cement truck and concrete truck and reuse it and prevent it from going into the stormwater system. There's also a truck washing system so that trucks can be cleaned and not divert dust onto the city's streets. Other stormwater facilities will, will be built. And lastly, as I mentioned, we will be increasing the recycle and reuse of demolished construction materials. This gives you a little view of what some of the buildings are like. This is the administrative building that we built on the site, and this is one of the interior warehouse buildings that will be on the site. So for all of the environmental benefits that are being proposed with this project, the need to provide construction materials for the city and the valley, we hope that you will support the project. And also, I want to acknowledge the, the support letter from the Monterey Corridor Business Association that was in your packet. That represents the whole Monterey corridor, and they've endorsed the project. So thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Let's go to public comment.
Paul, followed by Brian.
Yes, Paul Switfield from the Horseshoe. No, Mr. Shanauer, you didn't exploit slaves. Your policies just create them.
Paul, you're not, don't address the other speakers.
Why not? This man's proposing something in my city. This is my city.
Paul, we don't address comment, public comments cannot be addressed to any individual.
Brian.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't see it, and usually, Mr. Shanauer, he's really on top of that stuff when he does this. Are they going to, because of all the train accidents, derailments, are they going to double, you know, double check the tracks and all that, just to make sure? That would be, that's one section I didn't hear. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you, Tony.
Councilmember Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the report. We have a unique opportunity to improve both the impact on our environment and modernize the service output at one of the last truly industrial sites in San Jose. Due to the EIR report, the new facility is stored in a fully enclosed environment with air handling system, recycling water washer, and fully paved site to reduce the amount of dust during the offloading and storage operation. This created a significant reduction in mass particle released into the air and surrounding neighborhood, which is, which is a huge health improvement for our D7 neighbors. My understanding with this new project, the company nearly tripled the amount of working jobs available for our local residents, and anticipating over 800% increase in distribution, meaning our city will collect more taxes without raising tax rate. Additionally, this increase in distribution will shorten supply chain time and allow for faster construction rate for local housing and construction projects. Thank you to Granite Rock Company, Planning Commissioners, city staff, and all who have been involved with this project. I support this project and encourage my colleague to do so, and I motion to move this project forward.
Second, Councilmember Torres? Or Batra, sorry, Batra, go ahead. Councilmember Batra, you're up.
Okay, all right. I see this as a very powerful project for heavy industrial. How many new employees would you be hiring, or what's the number? It goes from where to where?
The current typical employment is about 25 employees. With this full expansion, when I say expansion, we're going to process more materials, we're not making the facility physically bigger, we'll have regularly 75 employees, and at peak times, up to 92 employees. Construction material goes in cycles, so you have busy season, you also have busy times. For example, you pave streets, or you pave highways, for example, at night, so you need peak work at that time. Or in the summertime, when the city's doing its street paving program, you have high demand. So that's the range. 75 would be sort of the steady employment at the site, going up from 25, and then at peak times, we could reach in the low 90s.
Okay, thank you. One more question. Is the processing technology changing, or the processing is still the same? It's just you're going to have more processing capability, capacity created at the site?
No, a key, a key component of this plan is, is installing new technology to move materials. So first of all, it's increased train capacity. So we don't have a big enough rail spur right now to exceed 25 cars per train. With this new rail spur, we'll be able to reach seven, up to 70 cars. So the train's coming anyway, so it's much more efficient to have 70 cars instead of 25. So that's one technology. The other is, the offloading of that aggregate from the train will be done in an automated system. So it drops into these buckets that then puts it onto an enclosed conveyor belt that takes it up to an enclosed silo. And then, when the time that that material is needed, a truck can drive under the silo and it drops straight into the truck. That doesn't exist today. We, most of it is moved by, by tractors outdoors, and that's what causes the dust and the noise and the air quality impacts.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I think that's quite time to move into that area. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Condellis?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I, I don't, I completely agree with, you know, having to revamp and update our facilities, and I appreciate Granite Rock's intention to, to do so. I, I did have some concerns with, with an article I read in the Mercury News this morning pertaining to the pollutants and the fines, considering, you know, we all live in San Jose, and so maybe I'll give an opportunity to the applicant to comment on, on that and provide some insight, because there were pollutants that spilled into the waterways, and if, you know, we approve an expansion and the opportunity to, you know, produce more material, one could deduce that, you know, the, the possibility of that happening could occur. So I'd love to hear, hear from you.
Yeah, so fair question. So I'll give you the background of the article that was in the paper. First fact to, to know is that the agency that regulates stormwater discharge is the Regional Water Control, a Quality Control Board, right? And through the, I'll just call it the incident, they issued no citation and pursued no violation of our stormwater permit. What happened was, industrial facilities like this have to monitor their outflow of stormwater, and they have to post those, that data on a public website. And Baykeeper, which is an environmental advocacy group, monitors that website, and they saw that our location had what's called an exceedance. So the amount of the particular contamination exceeded what is allowed. Now, that's not an unusual occurrence. It happens all the time in industrial sites, because in stormwater, you can never ensure exactly what's flowing, but you're supposed to catch it through your testing and then fix it. Well, Baykeeper decided, and it's totally their prerogative, to go to the district attorney in this county and ask for the district attorney to intervene and make sure that we avoided any future exceedance. And so Granite Rock cooperated with the district attorney, came to a negotiated settlement of how they should move forward, and that settlement is finalized and now public. And that's what generated the article. So the, the settlement agreement with the DA is now a public document. And that exceedance happened in 2020, so it's three years ago. And in 2021, Granite Rock invested $1 million in both the capital site that we're talking about today, as well as their Bariessa site, to enhance the stormwater system to avoid future exceedance. So that's how it played out. So I would say that as to that occurrence, or that incident, Granite Rock worked cooperatively with the DA, they came to an agreement, and they implemented a $2 billion, I'm sorry, $2 million solution for the two sites. And then lastly, I'd just say that the project that you're approving is, is exactly the permanent solution that everyone should want, right? We're going to pave the whole site. We're going to install modern stormwater control systems. We're going to wash the trucks. We're going to wash out and recycle the water, all things that don't happen regularly today, because this is an antiquated site, it's never come forward for city permits, and therefore, it only has to adhere to the basic requirements.
That concludes my comments. Thank you. Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I think I may have some more questions for the applicant, but let me just make a few comments first and ask some questions. I appreciate your explanation to Councilmember Condellis's question, although I will argue that, you know, as a chemical engineer who's, you know, been involved in these kinds of, in the issues of effluent and other wastewater issues, discharges that exceed regulation are not inevitable. So I hope we're not arguing that these happen all the time and that they are, it's okay that they happen all the time. They shouldn't happen all the time, and they shouldn't happen ever. We, there are technologies to prevent that, and I believe that our industrial actors are, must be held responsible to put in place the safeguards that will prevent discharge into our creeks. Our North San Jose, I mean, one of those discharged was alleged at, right next to District Four in Coyote Creek, and certainly, it's important that the residents that, along that creek and everyone else who uses it, and although, and for a lot of reasons, that we don't have that discharge. So I just want to make that comment. It's important to me that we be environmentally responsible, and I appreciate that there's some technical upgrades that... some technical upgrades that this project will bring forward. Is this project, I heard a lot of expansion in terms of the ability to move material and change way we move material and handle material. There's also an expansion in capacity of the facility as part of this in terms of the amount of concrete and asphalt being generated, or is it mostly about the way it's being handled?
Bless you. First of all, just to respond to your initial comments, we agree completely. I wasn't, in saying that this occurs regularly in industrial projects was not to dismiss the importance of it or the necessity to try to prevent it. I agree with, we agree with that completely. But that is the regulatory process, that's why you have testing, because no stormwater system is 100% foolproof, even if you do things right. But in any case, we've updated the current stormwater, and this project will further update the stormwater system. With regard to capacity, no, this, instituting this technology will allow for greater amount of materials to be processed and provided to the marketplace, significantly more.
Okay.
Yeah, in the form of concrete, aggregate rock, and asphalt are the primary products.
And I don't know whether this is a question that anybody in this room can answer, but, you know, we purchase a lot, there's a lot of, not we, but developers and the city and everybody else purchases a lot of asphalt and concrete for a lot of projects. I guess I'm curious about the breakdown of whether, of where this is being purchased currently and whether this will allow more local sourcing and prevent us having to truck in more. I mean, presumably, that's the idea, that it'll be more local sourcing, but I'm wondering if that's, at some point, if we have some data on how much, where our concrete comes from that's being used in the city of San Jose and how this might change that in the future. Probably not something anybody here can answer at this moment, but I'd be curious to have that conversation.
I can't answer that. Certainly, our project will allow us to have enough materials to satisfy market demand, so that's important. Because if you don't have local materials, you can't use local materials. But whether San Jose, you know, has a local selection process or whether they buy asphalt from out of the county, I can't answer that. Sorry.
Right, and probably DOT knows better too about a lot of that, but anyway, I'll move Carbon, concrete and asphalt creation is an extremely dirty industry. I think we know that. It's, not only is it dirty from the standpoint of some of the things we've talked about and what this settlement was about, but it's also dirty from a carbon and climate impact situation, you know, from that standpoint. Having said that, it's inevitable that we're going to use it. You know, we, I don't sit here, I'm not going to be, try to be hypocritical and say that I vote for all the projects that use concrete to build them, but yet I don't want to make concrete, and I prefer us not having concrete manufactured. We need the concrete for the, in the meantime. But I want to ask, and I don't know if there's a company representative or you know anything about this, what are technologies is Granite Rock implementing to try to improve the carbon content and carbon release as concrete is being manufactured? What we've heard from DOT is that the city is trying to go to carbon-sequestered concrete that actually sequesters concrete and is beneficial because it's not releasing the carbon, but sequestering carbon. What kind of, is Granite Rock involved in this kind of technology and what advances have been made in this industry locally?
Yeah, so I'll have, I don't know if Pat knows the answer to that, but I'll ask Pat Mapelli from Granite Rock to come up to see what he knows about that subject area. And while he's coming up, I would just, I would just contend from a carbon standpoint, having local concrete is better than having faraway concrete. I once heard that 50% of California's cement, right, cement is a component of concrete, at one point about a decade ago, was coming from China. So we were shipping cement all the way across the ocean to California to do our construction.
Yeah, no doubt, and I'll just interject on that point. I've actually not concluded that shutting down the Cupertino facility is the right thing to do because all it means is that we're going to be trucking in a lot of the materials that are made there now, which actually is going to be worse for both the climate, carbon, and just other pollution. So we do need to think that way. I understand, I agree with that.
Good evening. My name's Pat Mapelli. I'm with Granite Rock. I'm the land use manager. I don't have a background on the construction side, but what I can tell you is the building that Eric had shown up on the, up on the screen is an office complex, and it's our QAQC building. So when we make materials, when we make concrete, we make asphalt, there's usually a spec required, and then we have to make, make sure that we make our mix properly, and then we do the testing before that material is actually supplied to market. Caltrans has a very tight spec on asphalt. Concrete varies all over the place, and I know we do a lot of runway work at SFO, and that spec is really difficult to meet. What I, what I can tell you is we don't make cement, which is really the carbon driver for making concrete. It's, it's really what's put the pinch on Cupertino. But we are looking and working with people on different technologies for a replacement for that. The, the actual aggregate itself and the sand that goes into making concrete, the carbon footprint on that is relatively low in comparison to what it is for making the cement, which is the third component to really make concrete. And so we're, we're always investigating, we're always looking, we're always looking for opportunities to partner with alternatives to cement. There just hasn't been anything mass come to market yet that would drive you to invest heavily in, in changing your whole business model. On the asphalt side, and I'm breaking it into two components, there is a lot of oil that's used in asphalt, obviously. I really don't have an answer for you on that side. As to where any technology might be going, I know what I've heard on the concrete side, and there's a lot of people that are dabbling in that, in that space, but we're, we're trying to partner with the right people to, to move forward with something that does make sense.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the answer, and I know we don't have our technical folks in the room, but I'll probably try to have that conversation in the future. I just want to encourage Granite Rock, as we move forward with this project, to be a responsible player and always be looking to improve technology and not rely on, I mean, I know it's often profitable to not change with the times, but I think it's really important in this instance that we have a good actor, a good player here in San Jose who's willing to do the right thing when appropriate. So just want to make that suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks for those questions, Councilmember. Councilman Jimenez?
Yeah, just a few questions. I'm not sure if it's going to be Eric or the gentleman from Granite Rock, but as it relates to the current way that the recycling has happened, what I'm imagining, if you can describe it to me, but what I'm imagining is you get these chunks of concrete or other type of material that's essentially being ground up and worked through in that recycling pile that you, it seems like it's going to move to the eastern side of the property. Is that?
Where the crosshatch was is where the, the material comes in and gets sorted and everything, but then it gets crunched down and the components get reinserted into building or creating new concrete and new asphalt.
So is that process fundamentally changing with this sort of redesign of the property or is that remaining the same and just the amount is going to increase?
Well, it remains essentially the same, except that we're going to, we're going to do more putting it into the concrete and the asphalt on-site instead of shipping it off to other sites.
Okay.
So in other words, we're going to use the recycled material to actually create concrete and asphalt to a greater extent than we do today.
Yeah, and I guess part of it is, you know, I read the noise sort of section of the, of the document, and I think it touches on that, but I guess to the point I'm trying to get at is I'm curious if it's going to get louder. I know more work's going to be done, it's, because it runs 24 hours a day, right?
Yes.
With the, with the peak times being, I think, seven to whatever it is, or I forget the exact time. And so do we expect the noise to emanate from the plant to be louder after all this work?
Well, we don't anticipate substantial change, and, and in reading the noise report in the EIR, I think the, the most important thing is it determined that the noise impacts do not exceed the zoning code and general plan noise requirement.
I think they measured out 200 and something feet to the nearest sort of residence, which were on the other side of Monterey Road a little north, right?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and I read that. I totally know that this is, it's obviously in existing use, it's within the framework of what's allowable, so I'm not trying to suggest it isn't. I was just trying to get a better sense. The other question I have is related to the rail spur, and I'm wondering, is that going to, that, I imagine the actual tracks are going to actually be extended in order to accommodate the increased amount of capacity for train, right?
So what will happen is the spur on-site, which exists today, will be lengthened all, all the way along the entire, what I would call the edge along the railroad, and then all the way along the edge of the West Winds movie place.
Right, okay. So that's what I was going to ask, that was going to be within the existing footprint?
Yeah, it'll be in the existing footprint, and we will have three parallel tracks. So not only is it being lengthened, we will then have three parallel tracks, so multiple rows of cars.
Okay.
So that's how we go from 25 to 70.
Right, okay. And then what it made me think about is, obviously, the future of high-speed rails, seems like every day it's being debated in the newspapers and such, but assuming it actually comes, that it's going to be rolling near there, and do you expect any impacts from the future development of high-speed rail to impact that site generally and the spur specifically?
So first of all, to assure the council, we've coordinated closely with high-speed rail staff, as has the city, and nothing that we're doing in this project precludes the high-speed rail plan, which alternative four design was, was, is the chosen plan. Nothing that we're doing precludes high-speed rail from building what they want to build.
Okay.
And in fact, we even have on the edge of our property where high-speed rails, we've actually agreed in this plan to keep our structures outside of the zone where high-speed rail may want to take some land.
Okay.
So we've, we're being accommodating.
Right.
In terms of what the impact is, it's all going to have to be worked out because Union Pacific owns the railroad line.
Right.
Union Pacific runs the trains.
Correct.
And Union Pacific provides the service to our property.
Right.
And then high-speed rail is going to have to have a relationship with Union Pacific.
They've been in negotiations for years.
They're in negotiations, and it's all about how do you accommodate freight while you're also building high-speed rail? So that's going to be between Union Pacific and high-speed rail, and we're just a customer of Union Pacific.
Yeah, I understand, and I presume, obviously, this is all going to cost money, so I presume you all are doing it, being cognizant of that, right? So totally, you're not going to do something.
Most importantly, we tried to be cooperative and accommodating because we know high-speed rail's a high priority for the city.
Right.
And so we, we designed the plan to, to be accommodating.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Eric. Appreciate it. I have a question for staff. So currently, I think the nearest homes, residences are about 200 and something feet to the north across Monterey Road, but I know that just in the previous sort of presentation, we had the Capital Caltrain Station area plan, that's in progress, so theoretically, if that's built out, we actually have housing there in the future. It's literally going to be across the street. And so I'm curious how the future, this site impacts the future sort of development as we think through it, or the plan, as we think through that, and just the interaction with it. And obviously, this is what's before us today, so I presume we can't make any decisions with something that's in the distant future that we really don't know anything about, but curious if you could talk about that.
So Robert Mann for Deputy Director for Planning. Councilmember Sergio Jimenez, that would be speculative as part of the environmental impact analysis. We did not consider that, but when a proposal comes, we'll be looking into that, and if there are any mitigation measures, we'll require that, that be implemented.
Would it, I mean, I'm just thinking, if something, if housing is eventually built on that other, at the station area plan, I know that's pure speculation, just, but I was trying to play it out in my head, assuming that comes later, obviously, after this, mitigation measures, if like, if there's noise impacts, which I imagine there probably would be, given it's across the street and things of that nature, in that situation, would it just be a matter of things like, hey, let us build sort of dual plane, you know, special type of glass, to block out? Those are the type of things we would consider in any project that comes after the fact, right?
That's correct. The building orientation will be considered, and also whether dual pane or triple pane windows are.
Okay, and all that can be worked out, assuming this is built out as, as has been described, obviously, it's going to be, as this plan goes forward and is developed, it's going to be cognizant of what's actually going on.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Michael?
And just to note that it's a very noisy area, I mean, it's a Southern Pacific Railroad Line, right? So there's trains coming at night, there's Amtrak, there's Caltrain, so that's pretty noisy, and then there's a highway. So, I mean, I think that any project there is going to have to be really thinking about, you know, mitigating just the noise for its residents.
Yeah.
And at least from the picture of what I understand this project, it's actually going to reduce the potential impact on future residents because of, you know, enclosing all their operations inside buildings as opposed to having it with tractors unloading, you know, gondola cars externally and moving debris around.
Yeah, and I guess I wasn't adding any value to it necessarily, but just trying to be cognizant of some of the impacts. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, I have a question for, just for the planning staff. You could tell from my questions, I'm uncomfortable with projects like this, but also understand the importance of projects like this, it's a trade-off. What kind of assurances could we have or process could we put in place to, to get feedback and assurances over time that the company is responsibly monitoring their wastewater discharge, is doing the proper things for, for air pollution control? Are there any things we can put in as conditions in this approval that might help us feel better about the compliance of the business?
Yes, as part of your certification of the EIR, you're also adapting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for which the applicant has signed. So that will be monitored and reported. If there is any violations of that, they definitely will have to be penalized for it.
So that's already built into this acceptance here?
That is correct.
Okay. And you, and you feel that that's adequate in terms of being able to, because, I mean, this is a little different than some of the other businesses.
Yes, it is adequate. If a mitigation measure is not enforceable or feasible, we would not actually adopt it.
And Councilmember Cohen, there's also compliance to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District Guidelines and Permits, and also stormwater compliance that's also required. So in addition to the mitigation measures, there's other barriers, there's other regulations that they'd have to comply with and continue during operations.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Okay, that appears to exhaust questions and comments. I want to thank my colleagues for a number of thoughtful, tough but fair questions. I also want to thank the applicant. I may be a little biased, growing up in Watsonville where Granite is headquartered and always, you know, known for being a really strong company and good employer, but I want to thank Granite for making this investment and modernizing your facility here in our city. It certainly provides good, high-paying jobs and an essential service for the continued growth and economic vibrancy of the region. So we're excited to see the investment move forward. We had a motion, I believe, so I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously?
Great, thank you. Okay, we are on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda.
I have Ned Thomas, who wanted to speak on 10.1, and I did not call him, so if Ned wanted to talk now, he may be gone. Otherwise, I have Blair, and followed by Paul.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. To paraphrase the words of S.J. Police Chief Anthony Mata in his recent statement of the SJPoA situation, "The SJPD will help assist, as needed, a federal DHS investigation of the SJPoA situation and bring those who should be held accountable to justice." Among many questions at this time, it will be important to learn, to better ask, how the San Jose Poa fentanyl distribution ring that has networked with police departments across the country, and that also may have been the cause of a certain amount of deaths, harm, and jail time for many persons in San Jose and in cities across the state and across the country. We can all be for how police departments can help a community. The current The current SJPOA situation is an example that in San Jose, we also need to learn how to better practice and just be more clear how police departments can also hurt a community." These are important ways in how to better understand and practice the initial good intentions of how to build a future reimagined that most people can agree with on some level, and how all parts of a community can be better listened to and be a part of the process. And from this, how everyday community can better learn, better learn to police themselves, and believe it or not, in how to lessen and minimize the overall need in the institutions and technology of the prison, military, industrial complex. We need sunshine and openness to build healing towards our community future and not more cloudiness and confusion. And from this, we can possibly take a considerable chunk out of the street dug sales and specifically lessen fentanyl distribution locally in more clearly understanding the role police departments have in such issues. Good luck on the peer review program issues we can work on too at this time. Thank you.
Paul, followed by Brian.
Yeah, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Two officers came to probation and start questioning about accusing me of being somewhere and doing something that I never did, ever. And that's the reason why they didn't arrest me, because if there was something that was valid, if there was some crime that I committed in this city, they would have not hesitated, never. And so the city is manufacturing evidence, manufacturing, you guys, just city attorney and the council are sitting down strategically, how do we attack this citizen, shut him up, and send him to prison for as long as we could possibly do it legally? That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to attack a citizen and use the power of the office to do this. The mayor's office and the city attorney's office was never created in order to attack a citizen for exercising his constitutional right to redress his grievances to his government. And that's exactly what I'm doing, and that's all that I'm doing. The only danger that I pose to the community and to this council is to anybody that is lying or exploiting the poverty, the generational poverty, and the redlining policies that have been passed in this city that made certain that the San Jose Unified School District would beat children for speaking Spanish, creating a cultural genocide that stole from me language, the language of my mother. So how dare you come after me when you are the criminals? You guys are the criminals, but nobody can come after you, right?
Brian, followed by Jill.
Hello, thank you. Well, I'm not really sure if this has, you know, the city council can do anything about it, but I just, you know, there was another shooting in Louisville, and then another one in the same city at a junior college and technical institute, and I agree it's the guns, but there's got to be also a part of our leadership from the local, regional, state, all the way up to the federal, even the world, if you will. We've got to learn to, back in '62, I was just young enough to, or old enough to remember us preparing a bomb shelter in the backyard, which wouldn't have done anything. We were in the Bay Area, and we're heading that way again. People are talking about nuclear war like it's sustainable and survivable, and it's not. If we have an exchange with the Russians and the Chinese, and it, you're, you're going to be in a thousand years of depressions, famine, literally billions of people will die. That's all that happens in war. There is not a glory in it, it's not divinely inspired or any of that other silly stuff. People die and things are destroyed, and we really, I don't know how you implement that into a, a meeting or, but if there's nothing to build on and everybody's gone, everything else is mute. Absolutely, everything else is mute. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Back to council.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone. We're adjourned.